All right, first up is the Rogers Road project. Are you here? Welcome.
Thank you.
If you just introduce yourself before you get started, please.
Evening, I'm Matthew Jones, American Engineering, and we are here to present two projects. Do you want me to run through both? Do you want me to do the first one and stop?
Well, clear cut stop and just stay up there and we'll continue after that.
Okay, all right. So first project, Rogers Road. You can, who's advancing the slides? Okay. So Rogers Road is about halfway from the Brandon Oaks, which is on the left in this image, to Old Charlotte Highway, a little over halfway. We are seeking rezoning and annexation or annexation into Town of Indian Trail.
Question before you move the map.
Yep.
If you go back, where is the lake in correspondence to this site?
It's the front, near the road, near Rogers Road.
And the schools?
The schools? Yeah, I don't know the distance.
Does the lake incorporate into the property?
The lake is in the property, it does straddle onto the neighboring parcel.
Then you're budding up to two elementary schools.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. You asked about the Sun Valley schools? Yeah, I know they're up and to the left on that image, so northwest from here. I just don't know the distance.
Just trying to get my bearings straight.
Okay, okay. I don't know the distance to them, but they are up and to the left in that image where the annexation, where an annexation is, Sun Valley Schools are up and over there.
Okay.
Okay? This is the proposed, for now, preliminary plan of the development, single-family detached. You can see the existing pond. And at the front there, we've left some open space against Rogers Road and existing trees in the back, and we'll incorporate open space into the plan. These are some of the proposed options that could be incorporated into the development. Single-family, front-load, garage. So the information, we're seeking conditional zoning to SF5, Town of Indian Trail zoning. The total parcel is 25 acres, and we would be proposing in this layout 49 lots. The current zoning is an R20 in Union County. So we're proposing 60-foot wide lots, average 135 feet deep, with remaining four and a half acres open space dedicated separate from the lots. Okay? Any questions on Rogers Road?
Where'd he say it was?
It's at the corner and it goes down, correct me if I'm wrong, it goes down actually Wesley Chapel Road, or does it go down Rogers Road?
This is on Rogers Road.
So it's, um...
No, okay.
It's over near, so the white where it says like City of Monroe, those four parcels right there at the corner, that's Rogers Road and Old Charlotte Highway where the community college is.
Right, but where's Wesley Chapel?
Yeah, butts up to Villas of Sun Valley, that's that.
Oh, it butts up to the Villas of Sun Valley?
Yep. It's the backside of Villas of Sun Valley.
So between there and the college?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a completely different piece of land, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So you're budding up to the community college?
Yeah, South Piedmont is, are the properties.
Yes, the several acres.
Yellow and white to the east, yes.
That are over there, okay. Now the, now the shape of the lot makes sense.
Okay.
Of the site.
Because there's a field there and then you have the Frisbee.
Yes.
Yeah, that's actually owned by the college.
The disc golf is one, one parcel over.
You bud up to South Piedmont's property?
Yes, the parcel directly to the right is also them, yeah, also the separate parcels are all owned by South Piedmont.
Okay. All right, that gives bearings much better, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Jerry, do you have a question?
Yeah, are there any amenities other than houses?
We, right now, are proposing the ponds and the open space a passive amenity? So there's no structural amenity currently proposed in the plan?
HOA?
So HOA would be part of the plan, yes?
Why 49 houses and not 50?
This, of course, is a preliminary plan and always in the works and could change based on, wetlands could change based on surface water hydrology and many factors, but right now we're at 49 lot yield.
And is the entire parcel in, in the county?
The entire parcel is county, right now, yes.
When, when would you plan on building, if approved and...
Okay, perhaps two years?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mike? No questions? Shirley? Oh, sorry, sorry.
What is your price range on these homes?
Yeah, so 300 to 400.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. McIntyre.
You said that you would begin building in two years, or you would expect to, upon approval, be completed, be complete in two years? Start within two years? You said the price range is 300 to 400, what's the square footage of the home? The average, I know you showed some models, they were kind of close by, but any idea on the square footage?
About 3,000 square feet being proposed now.
3,000 square foot.
Okay. And the only other thing I have to add is Wesley Chapel, which is to your left, where people will be turning out to go, and to the right, Old Charlotte Highway, is already 20 to 30 minutes in the morning to get through. 49 homes could come with almost 100 cars.
Yes.
And on that small road, and the lights, and then with the school traffic from Sun Valley, it will, it can potentially create a disaster. Are there any plans?
I know that when we permit, we always look at traffic. I don't believe a traffic impact analysis has been done, and if it is necessary, we would have a turn lane if the TIA supported and required turn lane improvements into the neighborhood.
Okay, and that's all I have. Council has no further questions, they'll probably find some over the next week or so and email the town manager and send them over to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait a minute or start?
Oh, no, now we're gonna just introduce you again, and it's Harkey Creek, you're on.
Yep, Matthew Jones, American Engineering, and now we present Harkey Creek project, same applicant, developer. This, of course, is a piece that is already being constructed, Harkey Creek, phases one and two, which in the image, that is the second slide, if you've got those in front of you, it is the properties to the right of the red outlined parcel. That is Harkey Creek that is already under construction.
So can I just ask you a question before you go on?
Yes.
You're saying that this is being constructed right now?
Yes, that is Harkey Creek Development currently under construction.
Phase one and two in here?
Phase one and two are in there.
So this would essentially be phase three, sort of?
Essentially a phase three, yes.
Okay.
This is slightly north of the parcel we just looked at.
I'm trying to navigate myself.
Do you have any questions on location?
Yeah, I'm, I saw Hayes. Right, of course. Beside Sandalwood, opposite side, same? Okay, this is Sandalwood, all the yellow, no, that's theirs, behind it is Sandalwood. Okay, so it's...
Is the rest of Harkey Creek and Indian Trail or the county?
The rest of Harkey Creek was in the county and is still in the county.
But this would be in the town?
We are seeking to bring this into the town, yes.
Would that annex the first phase?
Yes, so the, we are seeking annexation, where is that slide, and a rezoning to SF5 conditional, rezoning on this one, and we would bring it into the town and perhaps make a connection to a deeded easement to the existing neighborhood that's just north of us.
So these are independent units, the rest of the thing is kind of like, they're connected, like townhomes, right? Split units or something? Is it like the rest, or is these all detached?
These won't be like what's currently there, we will have a road connection, so traffic will be able to move through, but the design of these are not the same structures as what's currently in, being built in Harkey Creek.
Thank you.
Okay. So the fourth slide, we have sample elevations of the product being proposed.
Okay, is that the end of your...
No.
Okay.
Not the end yet, no.
Okay.
It's complementary to what's being built in Harkey Creek, but won't be the same product that's currently being built. So we're seeking conditional zoning SF5 for this project. It is, this portion of it is a 42-acre parcel. It includes a piece owned by Wingate, which would be incorporated into this and combined, so 42 acres total. Currently it's in the county R20. We are, in this plan, proposing 125 lots, 50 feet wide, about 120 feet deep, and around 13 acres of open space, yes.
Will the phase three be in the same HOA and share all the same amenities with phase one and two?
Okay, no, it would not become part of, right.
You're done, or you want to ask questions?
Are you finished, ready, okay, sorry, Jerry.
The, the other part of Harkey Creek, is that on, what is the zoning there, R20?
That is still in the county, did they leave it? They rezoned to MPD.
To what?
MPD.
And what would that be?
It's mass, okay, master plan, it would be like a PUD, it was master planned district in the county.
So how many houses per acre?
I'm, I'm not sure how many they have there. Do you know offhand? No.
So what I'm hearing is there's an existing development, this is going to tie into it, I guess it's Harkey Creek, it's not going to share any amenities or be part of that HOA, it's going to be a standalone itself. I'm going to ask the same question as the previous time, what amenities are you providing for 125 homes there?
This one is also planned with passive amenities, so a couple potential stormwater ponds, open space, there's slight flowway that goes through there, so there would certainly be the option for trails, walking, but passive recreation, again, for now, there's no proposed structural amenity being proposed in this development.
Expectation of when you would start?
Okay, same time?
Two years.
Possibly two years, yes.
Mr. McIntyre?
So I'll ask a question that, let's see how we do this, you have phase one and two, that's in the county.
Yes.
What's the motivation to come to the town for this phase here?
Okay, so the Wingate parcel, which is the odd-shaped L shape that comes off the top of this, and then it does run down the west side of this as well, it's already in Town of Indian Trail, so the reasoning is to bring this piece with it and combine them to bring the larger piece into the town as well, since the smaller piece is already in the town.
And what about the prior project that you presented with the 49 detached unit? What's, what's the motivation behind that? This isn't, this is not a negative question, right?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
I mean, we're happy that before going to the county, you come to us to, you know, annex it into the town, I mean, we would prefer that form of presentation.
Yeah.
But I'm just asking what, what the motivation is, so therefore, let's see if they align with the town and the council's interest and yours and so forth.
Right, let me say they're wonderful questions, if I have to turn around and ask, it means you have very thoughtful questions, and I've done just that.
But she can step up to the mic to answer.
She can as well.
You can step up to the mic and answer, answer, answer some of them, but what...
She can as well, so it's the, it's in the small area plan?
Yeah.
The previous project is that we're in the small area plan, so the motivation to bring it into the town is for that reason.
All right, because here's why I say that, right? We have wonderful amenities in the town, lovely parks here over at Crooked Creek, we pick up the trash for residents who are in the town, and what's going to happen is, should we approve the second, not, let's just focus on the second one, should we approve the second one, you're going to create some jealous neighbors in phases one and two, because they're not enjoying these things, they're not getting their trash picked up. What's the possibility of actually getting all that annexed into the town? I mean, here's a, here's a big proposal that, you know, you can come with, you can come and sweep the entire council off their feet and say, hey, guys, we want to bring everything in.
Right, we don't represent the owners of that property, we can certainly reach out to them and see if they have any interest and see if we can perhaps bring it all, but they are definitely a separate entity from us and who we're representing.
So I'll say something that my mother said, mama said there's nothing wrong in talking.
Yeah.
Always just ask a question and see what's, see what's possible.
We can do.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Shirley? No questions? I'm going to ask Shirley's question, what's your price point? And your square footage?
350 to 450 for this project, Harkey Creek.
Again, 3,000-ish square feet?
Okay, a little large, 3,200.
Okay. Any other questions?
Inside about halfway down, there's a proposed connection to the road that's currently under construction within Harkey Creek.
So in the neighborhood that's to the, on my screen, to the left and to the north, that is SF1?
That is SF1 zoning, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Same rules apply, applies last time. Council will think things, get back to you through the town manager.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming, by the way.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is everybody prepared, we're right on schedule? Karen, or are we turning it over to Kevin? All right, Kevin and Brandy, you're up.
Thank you, Abby. Good evening, Mayor and Council, just want to provide you with a brief overview of the comprehensive plan and land use map for the town. So the comprehensive plan is the foundation of council's vision, it should be a guiding document to, to what we want our town to look like 10, 20 years from now, and it's a document to reference when making zoning and land use decisions. As you know, with our agenda tonight, we are currently amending that fairly frequently. So just wanted to give you a snapshot of the framework plan, I don't want to dig down into the comprehensive plan and bore you to death, but the framework just sets out the different areas in town, west, east, the bypass corridor, 74 corridor, your old Hickory corridor, business park, and then downtown. That's kind of how it was laid out when this plan was adopted in 2013. Here's the future land use designations, and you can see you've got downtown, suburban, you've got rural, rural residential, conservation, your traditional neighborhood development, business parks, your 74 in the pink. So this currently is, is our guiding document for how we think development should, should go in Indian Trail. As you'll see, this is a better map to kind of show you the nodes or the circles, the villages is, is what the plan refers them to, and when you drive around town, you know, I haven't been here long, but I just kind of assumed that the comprehensive plan was based on some of the existing when you looked around at what was there, and then since this document's been in place, I think that it has encouraged and guided additional developments in those nodes, so somewhat I think that might relate to our identity crisis a little bit as a town, because we don't have a traditional downtown core, we have these little nodes here and there and everywhere, so that is, that is what we have currently. Our land use map, of course, is our, our current zoning, and you, you can see here in the dark purple where we've got the 74, light purples, light industrial, you know these colors, mostly we talk about the, the pale yellow SF1, it seems almost every request we have comes with an SF1 zoning that's, that's trying to amend to something else. So this, this zoning map was adopted in 2013. And so I guess, you know, our village concept and just kind of to start thinking about, you know, where we're going, is this still the town's vision for growth? What areas do we want growth in? Are there areas we don't want any growth? Where would we want commercial, where do we want residential, where do we want industrial? Then I found this quote that I really feel like is very appropriate for where we are, "We need to be led by a vision of the future as opposed to being pushed by the problems of the present." And that's just, just my thoughts on kind of where we are with a comp plan that doesn't necessarily match maybe some of the vision of council, clearly doesn't match what we're getting from the market and what applicants are bringing to us. So that was a very simple overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to Kevin for a more practical discussion on your actual land use process, and then we'll be here for questions.
Sounds good. Thank you. I, I did want to anchor this conversation with this land use plan discussion and give you some legal broad advice, I, I know this is in the works, I would run, not walk, to the idea of updating this and getting a comprehensive plan and land use plan aligned with y'all's vision, I mean, hopefully a unanimous vision, but at least, I mean, a majority rules in this, in, in the idea that we had a plan that everybody was very excited about, kind of file that away when I talk through process here, and imagine how the process might be different if you had a starting point with a plan that had great buy-in from your citizenry, great buy-in from all of you compared to one that now is dated, that is not matching a lot of times what folks want, so I, I think one filter, when you hear what I have to say, I think some of your points where we might find things not as efficient as they could be, or a lot of some areas where there's questions, I think are almost inherent if you have a gap between your original plan that you're, that you're working off of and what folks, you know, again, whether it's private property owners, the citizen, the council, that anybody would want, so I, I know there's been discussion about going through an update process with this, and I would just say, please, I think that's a, an excellent idea, and, and file away as we talk through the, in the weeds here, how having that in a form you like versus not could really impact all these steps in the process, okay? Started with that as an opening, why I want it, you know, very much want it branding, that kind of practical sense of what's, what's going on in the, you know, day in, day out here. What I wanted to run through with you folks is, so what things come to the council, and those, that means rezonings, when people are asking for development approvals to change something that is on the books right now, okay? And I'd like to just real quick talk about the roles and responsibilities of the various folks on the town team to start off, roles and responsibilities, a quick hit through the legally required steps in a rezoning process, and then what I'd like to spend most of the time doing is, is kind of lawyer broad again, is, is share some practical tips that I've seen, both from working with private sector folks and with, working with municipal clients like, like you all, to help the process go very well from your perspective, and hopefully get you all what you want and get, get results that, that come out well, and for sure, anytime in this, please interrupt me with questions, I mean, I really am happy to go off script, and, and the most important part is to get your, your questions answered, and we'll see how much we can get done in 20 minutes today, and if we need to do another session, we'll, we'll do another session for sure, okay? So I hope that all kind of makes sense for plans. All right, quick hits through roles and responsibilities. In town, I'm going to divide you into kind of three groups, okay? Your professional staff, planning staff, engineering staff, they're the technical experts, every town has them, they're all hired to review these development plans for technical compliance with comprehensive plans, with zoning ordinance requirements, maybe it's engineering requirements, maybe it's traffic, you know, integrating with NCDOT or the utility department, but this would be, you'll see, technical review committee kind of language, if you go to other places, you'll get a group of technical experts, and that's who your staff is, okay? So you have staff is your professional technical experts. The second town group is your planning board, okay? They're your appointed citizen group with some special experience and expertise and interest, appointed by you folks, they are the recommending board, so they don't in the end have any definitive authority, they're advisory, they're a source of information for you all, just like the staff is a source of information for you all. So again, you have professional staff, you have a advisory citizen board, and then the third group is you all. And you all get the big bucks to be the deciders, right? Yes, I mean, really, it stops with you, and, and you all have to take all of that input from your professional staff, from your planning board, you'll also hear from the public and the citizens and the folks that vote or don't vote for you, you will hear from the property owner or a desired property owner, a developer who wants to purchase the property, and you will get all that information, and if it goes well, you'll digest all that and you'll make the best decision for the good of the order, okay? So three buckets, staff, advisory board, you all, the chiefs. All right, so those are the roles. We talked real quick about the rezoning process, and again, this is statewide, everybody does it this way, right? So coming in for a rezon, asking for something to change, a different zoning, this, it's, you're seeing pretty regularly, and so is everybody else, what's called conditional zoning, and so what conditional zoning is, is a site-specific plan for a particular development with a set of rules for that plan, so you could really think about it like adopting an ordinance specific to this particular piece of property, and you have all the ingredients on the books, it may be rules that are already in your code, it may be, you make up some new ones along the way, but you are creating a set of rules for this particular development in the rezoning process, all right? The non-legally required first step that we're doing here to try to get some good conversations started is the step we just did, that the, we've called it a development workshop, where at, at an early stage in a process, an idea stage, a developer can come to you folks, share a little bit about the project, share a little bit with the public, and let folks know what's going on. It's just a little more formal than a cup of coffee or a phone call, right? It's, there's, I would encourage you, by the way, you all could certainly be way more opinionated than you were in the last 20 minutes if you wanted to, it won't be a legal problem at all, you would be welcome to say, this is the greatest thing I've ever seen, oh my gosh, I've never seen anything as bad as that, I mean, that, that would be the time... I mean, that, that would be the time to, to go ahead and speak up. And I'm going to tell you, I've been on the other side of this. Nobody really wants to be told that it's a, you know, I don't like something, but I promise you, it's better to be told at early than it is to be told late. And, and this is good legal advice, but it's also just good courtesy advice, is that folks in your shoes like to be, you know, polite to people, of course. And it's, it's really more polite to tell somebody if you're really unhappy with something that just doesn't meet your plans or expectations. It's, it's not a thing in the world wrong with saying on the microphone here early that this is just not meeting our plans or not, not what we're looking for. So you've got that kind of informal opportunity pre, pre-process to, to talk as much or as little as anybody wants to. All right? Then you'll get to the official steps of the process. A developer will file an application with your staff. They'll handle the, the blocking and tackling of, of making that happen. They have their, and then they'll do their jobs. They'll do the reviews to see how it matches the ordinance and the requirements. They'll give feedback to the developer. The developers will make some changes typically. They, you know, nobody bats a thousand on their first submittal, and there's a little bit of back and forth with the staff. Okay? There's a public hearing, where they're required public hearings, where you all get the opportunity to hear from the public, this little bit, you know, beginnings of the kind of middle, let's call it mid-process. Okay? Public hearings are required, so there's mandatory citizen notification and chance for input. Planning board then takes all the information and makes their recommendation, and then we're back to you all to be the deciders again. Yes, sir?
So you said the pu- uh, public hearings, but it, it seems like public hearings are happening when they come for approval at council.
Yeah.
Should the public hearings be taken, uh, just taking place in advance, a couple of months in advance?
We could talk about that. That could be a process, I would consider it enhancement. I've got clients that are doing, doubling up on meetings, that are doing one earlier. I, I'll have a client that'll separate the public hearing and the vote, just to build a little more time in between. So that would be something, as a policy matter, you all could make a decision. That would require some ordinance changes, but you could do it. So there are different flavors of timing of the public hearing and final decision across the state. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Now I'm going to give you, I'm going to be opinionated here now. I'm, I'm going to run you through what I think A-plus decision-making would look like at the, uh, and, and y'all can tell me to overstep it here, but I'm, I'm going to give you what I think, when you, when I say what a good process looks like, I don't, I don't mean a result of whether it, the development's approved or not. Right? I, I mean, I won't say I don't care, but I mean, it's, it's, has nothing to do with the legal role, really, is, is we're looking for a good legal process, follow the statutes. And I'll go with the lawyer broad comment is, I would just like for everybody for it to be a thoughtful, well-understood, comfortable conversation, even if folks are disagreeing, where all of you all collectively, the client, feel like you have all the information you need, and you all walk out of the meeting feeling like you were plenty informed and had all the tools at your disposal to make a good decision, and that the public walked out of a meeting feeling like they understood that you all had all the tools at your disposal and that all the information was out there. And, and look, do I think everybody's going to agree on every one of these land use decisions? Of course not. Of course not. I, I do think it's possible that everybody could agree that it was a good process. And now I'm going to anchor back to, to this exercise, because this would help this a little bit, because it would seem, I'm going to editorialize this way. Y'all may or may not be aware that over the last few years, the state legislature has kind of scaled back in some places what local municipalities have the authority to do in these land use decisions. Okay? So a top example is, a few years ago, they took away the right to dictate architectural standards for residential development. Okay? For sure, you don't have the right to impose impact fees on a developer. Okay? For sure, you don't have the right to require them to make road improvements, you know, a mile off-site, even if it's creating traffic impact. Okay? Some of that stuff was, when I started practicing law, a lot of that stuff was up in the air. Folks were doing some of that. Okay? So no can do now. So, and the, the political reason that has happened, it, it's a property rights position, right? They're feeling like municipalities have overreached, and the way the building lobby says things is, they're very random, you can't predict what they're doing, they just make up their mind as they go, one at a time, they'll never tell us in advance. That's what they'll say about, you know, municipalities all over the state, and then they'll say, that's not fair. You know, say it's not, you know, hey, America's supposed to have the rules ahead of time, I'm supposed to know, I'm supposed to be able to do something. So what I think is a good, where I think that's, makes some sense, is it would be nice to be somewhat predictable here and have, be able to set some expectations ahead of time. So let me, let, let's go to the idea that we had a great plan for a minute. Okay? Your decision at its best would be, does this development proposal meet our plan? And if the answer is yes, presumably y'all would very quickly say yes. That's if you like the plan to begin with. Okay? That, by the way, if you went to, and we, we, we don't need to, I mean, we'll pick and choose across the state, but there'll be, there'll be, I mean, there'll be items in Charlotte that get approved like that. The city council won't spend hardly any time on it because there's nothing else left to talk about. Thoroughly vetted all the way through, met the plan, done. Okay? Some of them. All right? So question one, does it meet my plan? Question two, if it doesn't meet my plans and rules, is it better? Is it better for the town than what we had thought of ahead of time? And if the answer is yes, then probably vote yes. And if the answer is no, you should unabashedly vote no, and say, I like what we have on the books better. So again, I'm going to, I'm going to give you an example. I just went to, the last meeting I went to, just a couple of weeks ago, I was, I was at another municipality, and the developers' presentation looked a lot like that. They said it was, it was a bigger version of, of what we just saw here. They were wanting to be annexed in, and, and they said, hey, we've got this whole great new idea. And they said, and, you know, they had the answer to the question ready that, that Marcus asked. They said, well, let me tell you what we're doing this. I'm going to give you one thing that's different than your rules. We're asking for a little bit more density in our residential houses than you all would normally allow. And I'm just being upfront, I mean, is this, and the guy, he said, look, I'm being upfront with you. He said, y'all might not like that. It's a, it's a little bit more dense than you would do if I just followed your rules the way they're written right now. He said, but let me show you the second column, folks. He said, let me show you why I think it's better. And he told the, he said, and he said, if you give me a little more density, I can afford some of this stuff, and this is why I'm offering it. And then there was a chart of all the things that you're not allowed to ask for or require in ordinance that the developer was willing to put in. The list was, let me show you some architect standards that I'm willing to comply with, even though this, you can't make me. Let me build some greenways for you along with my sidewalks, so I can connect up the greenways through your town. Let me give you some land for some public parks and facilities. Let me follow the connectivity plans of such and such and such and such. And so they just put up a chart that it was exactly tracking what I was just saying. Okay? Do I meet the plan? Mostly yes, a little bit no. Do I think it's better? They started advocating for, I think it's a lot better. Okay? Then the staff's presentations, they go through, they explain it, and they say in the end, what'll happen, this was, you know, the planning board looked at it, it was a planning board meeting, and the whole discussion was around, does it meet the plan? Are these things better? What other things could we get? What could, you know, could we modify any of this a little bit? And it was just a very practical discussion anchored to plans and anchored to, is it better for the community as a whole or not? And so I would just hold up, I'm, I'm sharing that kind of model to you. I, I, I would think, listen to you all, that that would be a really nice, helpful thing to you, if you all could have meetings that, that ran like that for yourselves, right? That if, if, if you could anchor to my plans, if I could anchor to my ordinances, if the, if the public was very aware that we were anchoring to our plans and our ordinances, if the developers were aware that we were doing that, and I promise you, your staff will, that's, that's what their job is, and they'll, you've got a great staff with it, and, and you'll get even better, more detailed, more on-point information from staff, the better the front-end proactive work is. So that's the substance of it. If, in, as short as I can make it, if, ideally rezoning 101, ideally it would be a discussion about meeting plans or not, better or worse. It's about 15 minutes worth. Anybody have questions? I'm really happy to riff on this topic. I love this stuff, so I'll talk to you about anything you want to.
So essentially, what you're saying is that, um, um, what you're saying is that we do need to work on our comprehensive plan. That, that's, that's it. Because from my thinking, from 2013 to now, we've had a lot of new things happening. For instance, when I looked at the plan, it said proposed Monroe bypass. That's actually built in, you know, been in effect for more than a year. And there's different things that have happened in the town in terms of where the town hall is situated versus where it was proposed then. So do you think that one of the next thing that we as a council and staff should do is to really tackle the comprehensive plan, to do a redo of it, get citizen input, planning board input, council input, staff input, to kind of get that revamped, so that we can know where we want to be in the next? Because that would be a future-looking plan, right? We're at about 45,000 now, we'd probably max out maybe 65,000, so we have about, what, 20,000 more residents to go before we kind of max out. But is that your recommendation?
So yes, yes, sir, it is.
All right.
Yes, sir, it is. It'll be good law, but it'll also be good policy and business.
All right. Second question is, in terms of, can you shed any light on in terms of things that we should not ask for when we're sitting up here or in a planning board meeting? And I know you touched on things that we should look at, whether it ties into our plan, and right now, our plan is a, I don't want to say it's in disarray, but it's, let's say it's a little dated, let's use that word, it's a little dated. But from what you've seen in other towns, and when you've been here, when we have a rezoning request, do we, can we talk about roads? Can we talk about schools, asking people to do anything on that? Are those good practices, bad practices? And the reason I'm asking, I'm asking for myself, but also for the education of the other members here.
Yes, sir. And I'm going to give you a little more of a lawyer answer, because that, it, it depends on which part of the process you're in. Okay? So hear me out for a second. You all talk all day long about infrastructure, roads, existing conditions as part of this planning process. Okay? If you all, if you grab one of these consultant RFP responses, almost for sure, there'll be a section of the comprehensive plan process that they'll call, you know, existing conditions or infrastructure analysis or, or something like that, right? Where they identify, hey, what is our utility capacity? Where are we with schools? Where are we with roads? Okay? And if it goes right, the idea is you shouldn't plan to, and look, you shouldn't plan a big commercial development area where there's no sewer, right? So then you're wasting your time. So, so all that infrastructure and adequate public facilities can absolutely inform the planning process. Okay? Now, I believe the focus of your question, though, was when I'm dealing with a conditional rezoning request for a particular development approval. And what you need to stay away from is, is, hey, look, for the most part, you all have a lot of discretion on yes or no on these conditional zonings. They're, they're legislative decisions. I do not believe there has been a case where turning one down or approving one has been overturned yet in the state, in a, in a court. Okay? Now, the state legislature's made some changes based over those decisions. But what you cannot do, what, what you will lose a court case on, is if you turn one down for an illegal reason, okay, a reason that you are not allowed to regulate otherwise. So I'm going to give you a couple of easy examples. It is for sure you are not allowed to impose an impact fee. Okay? So if you all say, I am turning down your development because you will not pay an impact fee, I promise you, me and Ms. Wolf are going to call time out and say, guys, no, no can do. Okay? You, you about to, you about to lose that one. Okay? That's not okay. All right. Roads, I, I know it's a big public comment, I know it's the number one citizen comment, but the only thing you're allowed to put in your ordinance on, on roads, on NC DOTs, where that you can do the turn lanes, you heard the answer, that's what the answer is. The most they can do is if there's a traffic impact analysis, and it needs a turn lane to get into the development and help their driveway access, that, that is all you are allowed to regulate. I could, I could sort of wish for that to be different, but that's what the rules are. So you're going to get us twitching over here too, if you, if you start saying things like, I'm turning this down because I think I've got too much congestion three-quarters of a mile away on the road. The state legislature's going to tell you, that's for some other pot of money to take care of, and that it's not fair to piggyback that obligation on this particular property owner. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
At least close.
Yep.
Well, what about the schools?
Same, same answer. You're, you're, there's no, if, if you, if you said, you're talking to the guy, by the way, I'll give you a war story if you want to look back. I, uh, I, I, I was part of a negotiation, I asked for, for, uh, you can go look back in Charlotte, once, there was one, one time, a developer put a little bit of money in the hopper for the school system there. I was involved in that. They did it voluntarily, but if they turned it down, I mean, there's, there's no way, you, you cannot turn it down over, you know, you're not contributing to the schools or, no, sir. If they voluntarily, so let me, let me go to the other thing, the, we'll give you one more legal point. At the end of the day, on these rezonings, you all are voting up or down on what the developer puts in front of you. Okay? There's, there's only two motions at the end. I move to approve as presented, or I move to deny as presented. All the back and forth has to happen well before that vote. There's no such thing as I move to approve with the following six conditions added. That, that's, that's not okay. This entire process is designed to be collaborative and something that is, I mean, win-win, if we were talking like, you know, MBAs, is something the developer is reasonably comfortable with, something you all are reasonably comfortable with. So in the end, you're going to vote up or down based on what they put before you. Now, I'm going to give live advice here on this. This is a little bit of a false question if you have a good plan in place. Okay? Because again, let's, let's run the filter again. If we have a plan that folks are committed to, you almost don't get into these discussions anymore, right? There's no, I mean, why get in an argument over the traffic half a mile away, or what the schools are, or what the, you know, status of NC DOT handling infrastructure in the state is? Keep, keep it focused on what's in our lane, which is the land use patterns, and does it, and I'm going to go back to what I said 10 minutes ago. A discussion that you can have all day long is, does it match our plan? And are the pluses and minuses, if anybody's asking to change the plans, worth it? And so I'll give my example, I was going again. The developer, and this is again, not, not adversarial, the developer very comfortably a lot of times will offer things that are beyond, I mean, they're, they're aware of these infrastructure issues too. It's not like that, that, you know, nobody knows. And so the, the private sector folks are interested in mitigating them to some reasonable standard too. And, you know, you'll get projects where folks are willing to include and propose things that are in fact more than, than you could ever mandate, but it's, it just gets worked out because they see that it's beneficial, if they really understand ahead of time what the town is valuing, you'll tend to get the things that the town says they value, right? Then you almost tell them, folks ahead of time, hey, it would be really helpful to us if you had a greenway link to our park, right? That would, that would really, and by the way, it might be really helpful to you. So it's an exercise that really, the art in this is getting out of this adversarial mode and finding where's the common ground on, on kind of win-win. And by being a little bit, if you could share and have a document that says, this is what win looks like to Indian Trail, all of a sudden, I, I think you'll find private sector folks saying, hey, given us the script, we'll see if we can make that work. That's what I think would happen.
I'd like to go back to Mr. Morris's question about the schools.
Yes, sir.
You said you can't ask the developer to contribute
Yeah.
to the schools. But, um, to the schools, but we can still ask about school impact, possible school overcrowding, correct?
Well, I don't know what you're going to do practically with the information at the conditional zoning stage.
You can't deny it on that, but I'm just saying in the early stages of the discussion.
It's not, look, you're allowed to ask your questions, you're allowed to talk. I don't know what you're going to do with the information in the end. I think it's good information to have, it's all background information, and it may be that if it's something that is significantly higher density than your plan calls for, you know, maybe one of the reasons your plan's calling for lower density is because you're worried about the infrastructure, that'll be fine. But if you, I'll have to react to a particular situation on this now, right? Look, if you are, if you, if there's something that matches your plan and matches your rules, and then you say, even though it matches my rules, I'm not happy because of infrastructure issues, school or roads, I think you're going to lose that.
Okay. You answer my question.
Yes, sir.
So, sorry, Mike.
Go ahead.
So you're saying, really and truly, it's better to get that information before we get to even the planning board stage? Because that can help you where you can discuss it amongst yourself, or you put that into, meaning for us, planning board staff, before we get that. Because here's my expectation. By the time it comes to me, it would have gone through the staff and they would have checked everything. They're the professionals. They know whether it's either in a floodplain or the materials they're going to build, or the square footage, or all that stuff. They've checked at these boxes. So right now, what I'm really looking at is, I don't want to get back down into these nitty gritty details, because that's their job, they're the professionals. I'm just really looking to vote yes or no on it, based on what, whether it fits the plan. That's sort of the process that I should follow. And if I want information on the school board stuff, because the good thing about this town is that before we see these developments for us to vote on them, we see them at a very early stage, where we get to ask questions. And you said we can be more forceful, which I will be next time, because there's no legal aspects to that. But by the time it gets to me, really and truly, it's just a simple yes or no decision, right?
I think that would be a nice goal to get to, and it would be great if it, I mean, I think if it went really well, that's where you would get. And again, you see my theme, I don't think you get to that without a tight plan. I think if you have a tight plan, it's very realistic to expect that you would get to that.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Head, we have a couple of minutes left.
So back on the schools.
Yes, sir.
For traffic, if it shows that there's needs to be a turn lane, then that's set, right?
That's right.
Okay. Schools, then there's really nothing that we can do about school overcrowding.
Not at the conditional rezoning stage of it.
Okay.
That's not the tool to deal with the schools.
Win is.
Yeah.
Okay. So, by the way, I'm a school attorney, too. I do, I work for schools. I've got decent chance I've done some of the school real estate deals. So, again, when you do your original plan, all right, the status of school crowding and infrastructure and locations, same as utilities, can absolutely impact your plan, okay? Is that information where I want commercial, okay? I would like a split of commercial and residential, maybe that might cut toward, I want more commercial, okay? If I felt like my schools were crowded, I might want more commercial. It might cut toward a lower density number, right? That I would like lower density, and I'm not willing to consider higher density in all the areas. So your color coding on your map, I think, is 100% impacted by schools and roads and utilities and all that infrastructure. So for sure, that is the place to have the conversation. And then you all certainly can have an advocacy role, right, for, you know, however you want to with, for schools, whether it's the capital funding, and again, that's another topic, but what the legislature will tell you is the funding source for schools is the county.
Well, we've got five minutes to meeting start, so
Yep.
we're going to stop here. If you feel we need to continue this conversation, which is a great conversation, have Kathy and Ray schedule it.
Yep.
And I'll call a five-minute break.
Thank you. I hope it was a little bit helpful, and I will for sure be happy to, if we want to run another session sometime, I mean, of course, just let us know.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep, very good.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five-minute break.
All right.
We are.
Okay. Audience, please, if we can quiet down, we're going to call this meeting to order.
Daughter.
Everyone take their seats.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, please put your cell phones on vibrate or silent or turn them off if you have to take a call, please step outside. This time, we'll call the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. To order. If anyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
You're in range, standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, sir, I have, sorry, I have two additions. Oh, actually, I have one addition. That item's going to be 10C. It's going to be comprehensive plan. There is action for that item.
No? Any other additions or deletions? All right. Then I need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Head made the motion to approve. All in favor? That passes unanimously.
There's item 1B, sir.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah, I need to.
Yes, that's correct. We need to, we need to make a motion.
All right. So I'll make the motion for item 1B. Move to appoint Mr. Ray Allen as the interim town manager, pursuant to the terms of the contract included in the packet, effective February 18th, 2020.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Did you want to do an introduction?
Yes, I'll do that, actually. So we're going to deviate for a little bit, but good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Want to take a couple of minutes just to introduce the interim town manager, Mr. Ray Allen. Mr. Allen has extensive service throughout North Carolina, being town manager in more than one place. 28 years in Albemarle, if I'm not mistaken, right? You awarded interim in Norwood.
Yes.
And the next one, I.
Wade'sboro.
Wade'sboro, right. So want to welcome Mr. Allen to the town, to Indian Trail. I hope that you guys treat him very nice, because he's a very nice fellow. Mr. Barber reminded me that he is a recipient of the long leaf.
Order of the long leaf.
Order of the long leaf pine, right. So, and he's a UNC fan, so hopefully they do good tonight. But Mr. Allen, I'll give you a couple of minutes just to, you know, say hello and welcome you to the town.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. I'm very happy to be here, and thank you to the town board for making me the interim manager. I started last week. This is my fifth day on the job, so I'm still very much in a learning mode. I want everyone to know that I have sort of an open door policy, so I'm happy for anyone to call or come by or whatever. Happy to meet with any resident who has a concern. That's what we're here for, so just looking forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. That brings us to presentations. New business recognition. Is Case Chiropractor here? No, we'll, okay. All right. East Coast Wings, come on up. It's at this time, we give you a minute or so to introduce yourself, where you're located, and.
My name is Mark Evans. I'm the regional manager for East Coast Wings, located next to Publix, across from the Sun Valley Cinema, and been with East Coast Wings for a couple of years, and before that, a restaurant franchise in Florida.
Okay. And as everyone knows, East Coast Wings had closed.
Yes, it did.
And it was taken over by new ownership, and you're part of the new ownership.
Part of the new ownership, so.
So we want to welcome you to the town.
Thank you.
And as a token of welcome, wishing you many years of success. Thank you. Thank you for coming. CCS Express Care, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda P., and I'm the owner of CCS Express Care. I'm a family nurse practitioner, graduate of UNC Chapel Hill, Carolina Torios fans. And we just had our ribbon cutting ceremony, January 22nd of this year, and we've been doing business in Union County, with Union County DSS, with another one of our businesses for about six years now. So we just kind of, this is a whole new business entity here, but we've been here and we live in Union County, too. So this location, we're at 1001 Van Buren Avenue, Suite A, across the street from Metrolina Christian School. And so we're about 15 minutes from our home, so that's why we just wanted to stay in Indian Trail as well with this business. We are more like a convenience care clinic, not so much like a urgent care. We do see anything there, except for like broken bones, stitches, or, so more so like quick visits. We do like cough, colds, flu, sore throat, earwax impaction and removals, wellness visits, so it's just like flu vaccines and things like that. So pretty much, we can see anything there, but I just wanted to kind of keep the visits kind of quick, so I didn't want to get into like the urgent care stuff. And as a nurse practitioner, we cannot practice independently in North Carolina, so my supervising physician is Dr. Douglas Chan. He is over at Lake Park Family Practice. And we do take like major insurances such as MedCall, Cigna, United Healthcare, Medicare, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Aetna. So we do take a lot of the major insurances. And I'm trying to think, is there anything else? And I think that's it. Any questions for me or anything?
Questions for?
No. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having me.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you. And I have some brochures. I don't know if you guys want one. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our school board update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Sides could not attend tonight. He had something come up. My name is Mark Strickland. I'm Assistant Superintendent over Administration and Operations for the district, and thank you all for allowing me to come here tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that I heard a couple of comments about the ballgame tonight, the blue and the red playing tonight, and I heard on the radio over here that the last game that Chapel Hill won was against the Wolf Pack back in January, so go Pack tonight. I'll just say that. So you all asked us to come and make a brief presentation about some things tonight, and thankfully, I got here a few minutes early and had the pleasure of hearing Mr. Bringlewatt talk to you about some of the issues facing the town. We deal with Kevin a lot on construction issues, and he's a great guy and very thorough in what he does. What I would mention to you in the beginning is that we don't typically look at our school districts and zones by municipalities. We look at it in clusters. So hence the presentation of the Sun Valley Cluster. This is a repeat of some information that we gave to the school board some months ago, a few months ago, still relevant, and I went in and cherry picked the things that I thought might be important to you all. I also had at the end, as we were asked to do, and Ms. Queen was so kind to let me add some pictures on at the end, at the last minute, of Sun Valley High School. I know there's a lot of interest in that, and I'll spend a few minutes talking about that project as well. It has certainly been exciting for the time that we've been out there. So what you see in front of you is what we call a scatter plot. That is the Sun Valley Cluster, and that's just a distribution map of the students in that cluster. Oh, it's on auto, okay. So it is a map that essentially lists where the kids live, and you can see and figure out where the roads are and where the students are located, again, in the cluster. This is how we look at things, and so we felt like we would present this because we'd already used it before, and it provides good information for the cluster and for the town as well. The next slide lists the elementary schools, Indian Trail, Rocky River, so on and so forth. We've got our current enrollment. Again, this information may be a couple of months old. The capacity of each school, and then the utilization factor. If you'll note, on the right-hand side, we list the MCRs, which are the mobile classrooms. So if you look at Rocky River, you can see that it's at 82% utilization, but we have 12 mobile units there, which kind of is an odd thing to have. So what we've discovered, as we've lessened our dependence in some areas on mobile units, is that they're very difficult to sell or to get rid of. So when we try to sell them on GovDeals, which is an auction website that many government agencies use, many times, we likely get little or nothing for them. We've had bidders bid on the mobile units and never come and pick them up. So Rocky River has a number of mobile units there. We felt it at this time, and this is not specific to this cluster, it's throughout the district, that we would leave them there in case we needed them, or if they got into a point of disrepair, we would get rid of them. The next slide is what we use to look at capacities and planning. Mr. Bringlewatt mentioned impact statements, and you all quite often ask us to provide you with information about capacities of the schools in your area and the impact that development may have on them. So these are just some that our planner, Don Ogram, presented. I would point you to a couple of key numbers as far as we're concerned, and you all as well. The sixth or seventh column over says to be built. And so if you look at what's up there now, the light blue are the active subdivisions, the purple are the ones that are in planning. Right now, based on our count, and we get the information from you all, on this slide, there are, for these schools, about 1,500 units to be built. Moving to the next slide, which is for the Shallow Valley. Keep in mind, we had two schools at that site. They're now called Shallow Valley Elementary and Shallow Valley Primary, and there's another 1,400 plus. So in terms of looking at what we are facing and what's being planned to be built out there, there are about 3,000 units that are on the books right now. Some of those are active and being built now, some of those are in the planning stage, but we try to look at and take note of everything that comes across our desk. So I wanted to point out that for this area, we were looking at the Sun Valley Cluster, about 3,000 units there on the books. And then this is our cluster cohort. If you all will recall, several years ago, I think it was beginning in '17, the school system hired a demographer to come and look at the growth of the school system, and he looked at all of the clusters. He took the demographic data supplied by you all in the county and other municipalities and looked at where the groups of kids were going, where we expected the population to go. As you can see by this particular chart and the cluster for Sun Valley, we do see somewhat as the kindergarten and first grade kids are coming in, we do see a little bit of lessening of the number of kids that will come in, the graduating class, the 12th grade that's. as the kindergarten and first grade kids are coming in, we do see a little bit of a lessening of the number of kids that will come in. The graduating class, the twelfth grade that's shown up there in the cluster of schools is a little higher. In this particular cluster, it's not as pronounced as it is in other clusters. In the western part of the county, this cohort map looks entirely different. The classes going out are much larger than the classes coming in. But in this particular area, based on the demographer and the information that he provides us, we do see things tailing off just a little bit. I would note that, as you all well know, the census will be coming up soon. We are considering bringing our demographer back to look at the data again. Any projections we get may be good in the short term, a couple of three years out, but as you push that out, four, five, seven, ten years, the numbers get kinda skewed and they're certainly not as accurate. So we feel like, once we get the census, we'll likely bring that demographer back in to update the information so that we can do a better job planning for facilities in the district. Any questions on that stuff before I move along to the pictures?
Any questions?
Yeah. Sorry. So it seems that, from looking at the graph that you have, the eighth and ninth grade is really where we see a peak, ninth grade sort of close to four fifty and four hundred. What do the four hundred, four fifty represent? What would you call that? Total number of students in that grade?
Yes, yes.
Alright, so it seems that within the Sun Valley Cluster, that the, in the next five years, we should see somewhere about just a little over three fifty or three fifty, right?
Yeah, there's some growth in there, a bump going through there, that's great.
So is that the bubble that, that last time I think you were here, we talked about the bubble. Is that the bubble that we're seeing now, based on that graph?
Yeah, I think that was maybe two years ago I was here, right.
Alright, so that's the bubble that we're seeing, and within that time, things should sort of taper off, which means that, based on the growth that you've seen or the units to be built, do you think that we will need a new school within the cluster, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school? Based on, and I'm not looking for, I'm not gonna hold you to your answer.
Sure.
I'm just asking for your best guess.
Sure. So it's hard to predict because before we looked at building new facilities, we'd first look at either reassignment, student reassignment, or addressing short-term needs with mobile units. You know, obviously, that's a good way to handle the needs throughout the district. I think we would also have to wait until we got that new demographic plan, because the game is that you need to utilize your existing facilities as best as you can. So it could be that we could redraw some lines or handle the short-term growth with mobile units before we looked at building schools. That's a long process, and obviously it evolves capital from the county.
So in other words, then, the school board and the Department of Educate, well, county.
Commissioners.
Yeah, no, the board, the, you guys.
Board of Education.
Yeah.
Right.
You guys are dynamic enough that should, should you be presented with a big increase in the students, you have things that you can do to mitigate that. In other words, reducing overcrowding, whether it's reassignment, mobile classrooms, or other things.
So in the short term, they would be the things that we would look to first. And the whole effort in getting the demographer back is to have good planning.
Yeah.
Both in the short term, which is pretty accurate, but just as importantly in the long term.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Who else had a question?
Oh, you asked, thank you, about the bubble.
Okay, alright. Any other questions?
No, you can, you can go to the slides.
Okay, continue.
Okay, so some of these pictures are okay. Some of them are not great, but I brought the ones that we had that we had just taken. This is a shot, standing on the home field stands, looking back towards the field house, which you see in the middle of the picture. And then in the background, you see the new cafeteria addition, the backside of the kitchen. This is just a picture of the new addition. This is called G and H. That's how it's denoted on the plans. This will be housing the new administrative offices and the new kitchen and cafeteria, which is sorely needed at Sun Valley High School. This is a picture of some of the CTE classrooms inside of the building. This is the kitchen. You see the big rectangular object in the middle. That is a kitchen hood, which has been installed. This is the cafeteria or dining room proper. It's a big, huge space. We are, you may can see it on the left-hand side of the picture. There are a couple of ladders, two orange ones and I believe a yellow one there. That will be a charging station. It would be a congregating place for students, something not traditional, then your standard seats and rows that you would normally see in a school cafeteria. We try to dress things up in school cafeterias. We have a great program. We offer great value for the money that you pay for the meals. So we try to create an inviting environment in the cafeteria to get kids in there to eat. And I think Sun Valley is going to be a great place for those kids to go and congregate. This picture doesn't look too exciting, except if you'll notice on the left-hand side, you can see some sheet rock installed. And the significance of that is that the building is dried in. We've got sheet rock going in, and that's great, because as the sheet rock goes in and the windows are installed and the building receives the HVAC system that comes on, we'll be able to begin finishes. So the last picture is the serving area. So this is where the serving lines will be located. Back behind there, those openings in the wall are the pass-throughs going back to the kitchen area. And then lastly, again, not exciting, but absolutely shows progress. This is one of the new bathrooms that we have installed in the new addition. You can see the floor tile, the red of Sun Valley, or burgundy of Sun Valley in the plan. I want to take a minute just to mention what has gone on at Sun Valley High School in terms of the construction. It has absolutely been a challenge. I don't know if you all have had the opportunity to ride by there and take a look at the project. I've worked on many, many projects over the last twenty-five-plus years. And Sun Valley High School has been one of the most challenging projects that I have worked on. We've got an existing high school. We are doing major renovations there and site work. We have to handle the school traffic, the bus traffic, and all the while keeping all of the kids safe. It's been an exciting project, and it's been interesting. I'll also tell you that we've had plenty of rain, as you all may well know, and it seems like most of the rain that comes hits Sun Valley every time it comes. It has been a challenge. We get a few days and then it rains, and then we get a few days and then it rains. But we're making progress. The new addition part of G and H with the new administration, the cafeteria and dining room, we're hoping to get in there in June. That will free us up to do other renovations on the remainder of the campus. Be glad to answer any questions about Sun Valley High School.
Any questions?
No, I actually want to just say to you, thank you for coming in and speaking with us. Do appreciate it. We'll ask you to come again, though.
Be glad to come.
Especially if you can provide some updated pictures for Sun Valley. It's really good that you guys were able to, you know, show some love down there. That's pretty good.
So as we get closer to the completion date of the new building, if you all will invite us back, I'll be glad to come out and give an update.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. We may not give you three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask that the audience, as well as the speaker, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening, or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or the council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing the grievance during, here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect our town employees' right to a fair hearing of your grievance. Jonathan Baer, you have three minutes when you hit, come to the podium.
Hello, council. For the viewing audience, my YouTube channel is Truth You Can Handle, and they can watch my videos that I record, which primarily deals with government accountability. I also recently discovered a Facebook page that deals with government accountability, and that is Truth in the Trail, and I recommend people to look at that. Outside these doors is a memorial for veterans, to honor them. I am a veteran. Mr. Morse is a veteran. And the last time I tried to speak, I was severely dismayed at how quickly and how easily you silenced my free speech. Also, for those who mean silence, your silence was deafening and speaks volumes. Especially considering when you guys did not even know what I was going to talk about. I think everyone should be embarrassed and ashamed of the council for their behavior. At the time, I was going to read, or at least cite, the title, "Indian Trail Town Manager Placed on Administrative Leave Pending Investigation," WBTV. Since then, Indian Trail Town Manager Placed on Leave Out of Building, that was the Fox Forty-Six. Then, it was Sadik out as Indian Trail Town Manager. This was the Carolina Weekly. I wasn't even allowed to mention those things that were reported by the media. The media got those reports from you, and I wanted to speak about things that you released to the media. Finally, I have this right here. You all know what this is. This was a false accusation placed against me. Interestingly enough, there are no people, no accusers listed here. The only names on here are the town attorney, Patrick Sadik, Mike Parks, and Captain Chase Cobble. I am asking the town council to please suspend the rules and to have this rescinded because they are false and libelous. Finally, I am prepared to file a complaint with the North Carolina Bar Association for the misconduct of your town attorney in collusion with certain staff, namely Pat Sadik, to create this document and to have it where I could be arrested if I showed up in this building unannounced. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close public comments. Brings us to Captain James.
Just a minute.
Oh, wait, sorry, council rebuttal, sorry.
Council feedback, man.
Council feedback.
Mr. Morse had his hand up.
Mr. Morse, put your hand up.
Would it be a problem to leave a copy of that for each of the council members?
Actually, I don't need one. You can keep it. I don't need it. You can, you can get it from him, but I don't need one. I don't need a copy from him. I have that letter.
If you could share that with me, I would appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Alright, Captain James, sorry to make you stand up a second time.
Just a couple things, or a couple items of interest over the month of February that I want to touch base on and kinda give accolades to where they do. The flooding event we had at the first of the month, I really wanted to say that it was a seamless op between us and Polite Works. Adam and Abby, it was, I don't think it could have gone any better. We did learn some, we do have some issues with the amount of barricades that we have, and I'm in the process now, or the county is in the process now, of adding another barricade trailer for us up here to be used in conjunction with the town for, for things that run up on us like this. That happened so fast, and knowing the roadways like we do, they're gonna flood automatically, and being prepared for that, when what I've got already, and what Adam's got already prepared, is gone in the blink of an eye, and we're still taking on water and still losing roads. Several rescues occurred that day for cars in the water, and people stuck in the water, and a couple animals stuck in the water. But again, I'd like to thank Adam for his, the way me and, he and I have worked together has been, has been flawless. February nineteenth, thirty-eight sixteen, Sardis Church Road, Legends, they're behind the QT. One of the first issues or complaints that I really got was, being appointed up here in October, was about a gambling operation that was going on inside that business. Our vice and narcotics guys began a investigation that spanned back to the first of December. On the nineteenth, they actually conducted a search warrant at that place, and that business, and shut it down. It's still an open investigation, as who they're trying to find is the owner and the ownership of the building, or not so much the ownership, but who was actually running the building at the time, which, from what I know so far, is pointing toward out-of-state individuals. On February twentieth, in the midst of the snowstorm last Thursday, Mr. David Plyler from Charlotte decided he'd walk into the SunTrust Bank and rob it in his costume, which consisted of a white, long Santa Claus beard and white patches on his face and a hat. The, as luck would have it, one of Indian Trail residents was walking out of the bank, noticed the costume as he entered the bank, and just being aware, decided to call nine-one-one. Her taking the initiative to get involved and call nine-one-one gave us a jump start in getting people there. Within seconds of her call, we had cars picking him up after the robbery was complete and leaving the parking lot. Once they, they picked him up, they tried to stop him. He wouldn't stop and led my guys on a twenty-eight mile chase that went through two counties and down into South Carolina. Here's the part that really impressed me. Not a civilian injured, and not a dent on another car, or a civilian car. One small scratch on one of my vehicles, one of my guys' vehicles, and that was at the point where we terminated the pursuit to stop him because it was getting so bad. Four o'clock in the afternoon, again, I can't tell you how impressed I am and how proud I am of the guys that work up here, the guys and girls. I don't think you could have a better crew providing services for the town of Indian Trail. That's all I have.
Any questions for Captain James?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to the consent agenda. If there's no concerns, I'll need a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Head made the motion to approve. All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. That brings us to public hearing, three-one-nine Plyler Road, Comp Plan Amendment, CPA two-one-zero, two-zero-one-nine-zero-zero-nine-zero, number R-two-zero-zero-two-two-five-zero-one, and zoning amendment, ZM-two-zero-one-nine-zero-zero-nine-zero, ordinance number zero-two-zero-zero-two-two-five-dash-three-two-eight. It's these, you're on.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council, once again. Our first public hearing for the night is a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for the property located at three-nineteen Plyler Road. The future land use designation is currently high-density residential. The proposed future land use is mixed use. This request also includes a rezoning for the five-point-six acres from SF-one, low-density residential, to Regional Business District, which is the zoning designation along our seventy-four corridor. The applicant, the Moser Group Incorporated, are requesting these changes in order to be able to more effectively market the product, property. This is an aerial map with a yellow star indicating the location of the property, just off of Highway seventy-four. Photos of the existing site that display the land uses that make the low-density residential currently there somewhat problematic. Existing zoning map in the light beige as SF-one. And then the future land use with the gold orangy color is showing you the high-density residential that the comp plan sets out. that the comp plan sets out. This rezoning is consistent with goal number one, economic development. The comprehensive plan's future land use amendment request is consistent with the business and commercial development occurring on the adjacent property and in the 74 corridor plan. Planning Board recommended approval of the CPA and ZM 2019-0090. And the action requested of council tonight is one-step process for the comprehensive plan amendment, and then the usual two-step process for the zoning amendment. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? No.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need two motions. If there's no questions, oh, yes.
Just checked to see if the public comment.
Sorry, nobody signed up for public comments on this one, so we'll open and close them. My apology. So, counsel, if there's any no discussion, we'll need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R200225-01.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to approve. All in favor? That's passed unanimously. I need a second motion, please.
Motion to approve as presented the request for ZM 2019-0090, ordinance number 0200225-328. Oh, should I go to step one?
Yes, step one.
Oh, sorry. So, all right, let's try this again. So, I want to make a motion to approve the statement of consistency as read into the record by staff.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to approve the consistency findings as read into the record by staff. All in favor? That is also unanimous? Now?
All right, I'll make a second motion to approve as presented the request for ZM 2019-0090, ordinance number 0200225-328.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to approve. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Okay. That brings us to item B, the Chestnut Town Homes Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number CPA 2019-0106, number R200225-02. Also included is the annexation of Small Area Project, Ordinance Number 155, and zoning amendment CZ 2019-0106, Ordinance Number 0200225-327. Mistise?
Thank you, sir. The second public hearing for tonight is an annexation, comprehensive plan, and conditional zoning for Chestnut Parkway Town Homes and Commercial Development. This request includes annexing approximately 1.926 acres that's currently Union County unincorporated, and amendment to the comprehensive plan from parks and old Chestnut Parkway alignment to mixed use, and lastly, a conditional zoning of approximately 9.11 acres from single-family residential SF1 and Union County residential RTN to mixed-use development. The applicant is Union Station of North Carolina and made this request in order to allow 93 townhome units and a commercial building. Before you, within your packet, is the proposed concept plan with the 93 townhomes and the commercial building to the northeast of the site. Here is an idea of the architectural style proposed for the unit's interior to the development, and then the architectural style for the unit's fronting on Chestnut, as these are rear-loaded products fronting Chestnut. Here's an aerial map in the teal color with all of the parcels being considered tonight. This map's depicting the annexation area, highlighted in red, and then, as required, the survey that was submitted to show those boundaries coming into the town. Here's a photo of the existing site, looking southeast along Matthews Indian Trail Road, and then northwest along Chestnut Parkway. Existing zoning in the light-yellow beige is the SF1, and then you can see the little portion of Union County RTN in the bluish-purple color. Future land use here again sets out the old Chestnut alignment and a small portion in green of the parks. Staff analysis, TIA was not required for this project from the town or NC DOT. NC DOT did give conceptual approval of the driveway access. All of the residential parking has been met and exceeded. Commercial has been exceeded as well. Union County Public Works, Union County Environmental Health, and Union County Fire Marshal approved the concept plan. We held two community meetings on June 27th, as required. There was only one individual that attended that meeting, and then the school impact analysis indicated 56 students preschool through high school. And I'm reading this into the record to record the consistency findings and statement of reasonableness. This rezoning is consistent with goal number one, land use and housing, and is consistent with the business and commercial development occurring on adjacent property and in the downtown master plan. Conditions are contained within your packet. Planning Board recommended denial of this request. And requested action of council is the one-step process for annexation and comprehensive plan, and the two-step for conditional zoning. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Brandy? The developer builders here?
Yes.
Did they want to say anything? Evening, gentlemen. If you would just introduce yourselves.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm Stephen Helms. First, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just want to introduce, we've got all our partners here. Cam Helms, Jeremy Harvey, and Larry Helms are involved in this project. Cam and Jeremy have a local landscaping company. They employ about 50, 60 people in the town. Larry and I, along with Shirley and Laura, have a little insurance agency on the other side of 74. We've got 12 people that work here. We're here every day. We've been here a long time and plan to be here for a long time in the future. Larry has sat in your seat several years ago, although it only took 24 votes to get elected back then, not the several thousand that you had to garner. But he was telling me the other day that, back then, you're talking about, the Indian Trail Athletic Association had a budget as big as the town. It was a big day when, you know, they had put in sidewalks. It was a big day they got a new computer instead of a typewriter. So, it's a lot different now with what you guys are doing and the leadership you're providing, and we appreciate that. Cam, Jeremy, and I all went to school here, went to Sun Valley High School. We all played at Edna Love, and that was the only park in town with the, we're happy with the leadership you guys have provided. We've got, you know, Crooked Creek, Extreme Ice, Carolina Courts, the Chestnut Park. It's changing the town for the better, and we appreciate that. So, what we'd like to provide, propose tonight is about $30 million in additional tax base to the town of Indian Trail. It's going to translate into school dollars, I think $130, some odd thousand, and the town tax base $50,000 or so. What we've got, and Matt will go into further detail, the proposal is 92 units, 30 of them, like Brandy said, facing Chestnut Parkway, and other 62 on the interior that are going to be front-load garage units. And shouldn't go any further without thanking Brandy, because we probably wouldn't be at this point right now in the progression without her input and guidance as far as, you know, we provided a first draft, and I could see on her face it wasn't something that the town was in love with to start with. It was just, you know, it's kind of, we thought it was good, but she's got more experience in this, and the way she guided this through that process to get to the point where we've got, you know, some brick variations of brick and stone and different colors, and make these things look like what they are, is they're single-family homes that happen to be attached. So, we appreciate that and the professionalism she showed during that process. We went, we did go through the developer workshop, went through the planning board, the community meetings, and I'll just share the highlights of those. We did get turned down on the planning board, and one part of that, I think, was our fault. We got a school impact study, and it showed four individuals. And, you know, to the planning board's credit, they recognized that it's probably not right. So, we went back to the drawing board. We got an individual who's got a Bachelor of Science in Statistics from Clemson and a Master's from Yale, and a career of doing statistics and census information. She came back, as Brandy said, 56 children expected in the neighborhood, which fits kind of with the expectations of the target market for the community of a third being about being single or having a roommate, a third being married couples, and a third having one to two kids. So, those numbers separately kind of come together and make sense. Couple other things, we've, as part of that, we, she talked about the parking. We got 140 some odd spaces in excess. After the planning meeting, we went back and got some additional parking, I think nine spaces near the mail kiosk, another four spaces near a park. When we heard your questions, your requests during the developer workshop for a dog park, we've added that. We've heard also your request, thought it'd be good to put a park in there, so we've added that. So, we've done those things, and we've also had some communication with the folks at the, with Mr. Perez at the Swim Club to try to add some benefits to the unit owners out there, whether it's swim lessons for a month, master swim, or some discounts for the first year of competitive swim, if kids out there want to do that. So, we've done a lot of things based on some feedback we've gotten. Also, I want to mention in the community meeting, there was one individual, he asked for a fence between the commercial property and where we have, and we're going to do that. So, we're at the point, I think we've jumped, taken that feedback, and I think made the project a little better, and we certainly appreciate that. We've got Matt Kirchner here with Eagle Engineering. He's going to share a little bit further details. If there's any questions you have for me or any of our partners, we'd be certainly glad to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Helms? Okay.
There was some problems with the pond not having a fence around it, or some protective area there?
There will be a fence around the pond.
And the, can't remember writing here. And the fence were, there's private property and some bushes there that they wanted a fence there to?
They did. That was, a request came from the community meeting, and we are going to add that fence there to create that buffer between the?
And then the dog park.
That will be there. It's?
So, you've made every effort to try to satisfy everybody's needs here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Was it originally 93?
It was.
And now it's 92?
Yes, sir.
Right? And what did you do with?
We added space for, we put the dog park, and then we added, we took away? Oh, go ahead.
You already gave a great presentation. Let's go ahead and look through that.
In order to put the park in there, gazebo, park benches, and Matt will point.
So, right here is where we lost it. Right here is where we took out a unit, and we made this a gathering space, a new park right there. And over here on the side is where we had the dog park, and that side as well.
So, yes, you are correct.
So, pulling out the dog park, again?
It'll be over there.
It's over there. It's not at the retention pond then, like it was?
No, it's just the pond itself, and then we have the regular park right on the side.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a concern. As far as foot traffic, pedestrian traffic, going from the townhomes over to the park, how are you guys planning on mitigating that?
So, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street here, as well as a sidewalk that runs all along Chestnut Parkway coming across. So, you have interior sidewalks all the way along both sides of the street here, as well as along Chestnut Parkway to get to the park.
So, were you guys the ones that mentioned a pedestrian bridge early on in this process?
Not on this side. We have that bridge on. There is a crossing over on the next to the commercial side. It's already kind of set up for a pedestrian crossing from the parks to go over. That might have been done when the Swim Club went in. That's already there, dedicated for a crossing.
Yeah, one of my still biggest concerns is that eventually Chestnut Parkway is going to be, have a left-hand turn on Independence. Is this correct? Do you all recall?
It will have a left-hand turn. The whole project itself, and on its offside improvement, will have a left-hand turn to be able to turn onto 74. That will be the only intersection along 74 that will allow that left-hand turn.
Does council have any concerns with the amount of traffic and the allure of crossing that street there, once it's finally built and wide open?
What street?
The Chestnut Parkway.
People crossing it into the park?
Yeah.
Oh, again, one more question.
What was the vote from the planning board on this?
Three to two.
It was three to two.
Three to two. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that was the best that night as well. So, that was the best of the planning board that we had that night, even if I get it approved by Larry and his mother, that was two of them that night.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Average is, price is still going to be around 300, 350?
That's the expectation. 300,000 is the expectation. And it'll be, oh, I didn't mention it, three-bedroom, and there'll be three-level townhomes. Two-car garage, and then space for two cars in the driveway.
Got a question maybe for Brandy or someone that would, with the hospital. Do we know when the hospital's supposed to be completed? Is it 2023?
It is fourth quarter 2021.
2021, okay.
Yeah, it's in three phases. So, this phase one is what he's talking about, and you've got three phases, which is 2028. It's a 10-year project.
No, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
This time, I'm going to open up the public comments with the same rules. Peter Perez? Time will start after you state your name.
Hey, my name's Peter Perez. I'm the owner of the Swim Club down the street. I was here a couple weeks ago. Y'all welcomed me with your plaque, which is awesome. I just came to say I support this project. To me, you know, I started my project probably two years ago, year and a half, almost two years ago, and it's kind of interesting to me, you know, as the, in a new business here in Indian Trail, I was coming either way, but it was just a bunch of woods out there. And to see the apartments going in and the hotel, and now this project, to me, is exciting. I think the whole area around the parks and the basketball and our Swim Club, hopefully, and with some residential stuff, it's something I'm very excited about. I've been working with this group a little bit on us hopefully having some things we can offer to the new residents that would make it a little more attractive to them, and hopefully a benefit to us, to be honest. And so, I just came to say, as far as being the neighbor next door, we are in support of this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no, is there any discussion, counsel? Mr. Barber?
Well, I'm looking at the project, and one I always like to hear that you've listened to the planning board and the people's concerns. You got the fence, you put in the dog park, so I always think it's our planning board and volunteers do a great job of addressing these things, and you addressed the concerns, and that was important. I said, like he said, is you got a Swim Club there, you got the parks, you got Carolina Courts. I mean, years ago, with all my kids, I mean, I would have loved the location of this, of all the things, because we have the parks for the people to use, the Swim Club, and all the things that are there would be great for people with families and professionals too. And I really like the fact that y'all spruced them up and put the things in, so I don't really have any questions. The, I think it looks nice, and I think the location right there at the parks kind of goes with all the reasons why we built the parks and let Carolina Courts and the Swim Club come in, so that's all I've got. Thank you.
I would agree with Mr. Barber. If there's no other further comments, we have, can you put the motions that they have to go through? to go through? Okay.
Mayor, we need to close the public hearing.
Oh, what was that?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. I need to close the public comments and the public hearing. Sorry. Well, it's a good night for all of us.
So I'm, I'm going to take a stab at this. I, I like this project. So step one, I'm going to make a motion to approve the annexation ordinance number one-five-five.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve the annexation ordinance number one-five-five. All in favor? That would be unanimous.
And then I'll make a motion to approve resolution two-zero-zero-two-two-five-dash-zero-two.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve the resolution. All in favor? That would be unanimous.
And, okay, we have a couple more.
You're doing good. Don't stop now. Don't forget step one.
So I'll make them, uh, I'll make a motion to approve statement of consistency as read into the record by staff.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve the statement of consistency as read into record by staff. All in favor? That passes unanimously.
And then finally, I'll make a motion to approve as presented the request for CZ-two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-one-zero-six, ordinance number zero-two-zero-zero-two-two-five-dash-three-two-seven.
Mr. McIntyre made a motion to approve. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Since the supermajority was needed, there's no need for a second vote.
So before we move on, so can I say something? And I want to echo something that Mr. Barber said. It's good when, um, you have people who come before the planning board and before the council initially to talk about a project. But that, but they'll, they want to work with staff and they want to work with the planning board and work with council. I'm sorry. This is Siri, but, um, I appreciate that, that there's discussion, there's suggestions and the suggestions are received and hopefully implemented. So that's, it's really good when you see all these things working together. I think it's going to make our, our lives a little bit easier once we kind of get through the comprehensive plan process, but it, it's good when that happens. And I want to commend everybody, planning staff, you guys are great, you know that, planning board and council and the applicants for working together to bring this project on. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Thank you. I will close. Did you want to say something?
Does that mean Larry S. Hell stands for Selling Town Homes Now? There you go. That's all I had.
Okay, that brings us to old business. Cleanup of litter. Mr. McLamb?
This should be quick. This should be very quick. Good evening. Good to see y'all again. So at the last, uh, council meeting, we talked about litter pickup. We went out to a few companies. We took that list that we read, uh, read back to y'all. We got back basically one quote. It's from the same company that done it the last two times that we've done it. They did a good job then, so, um, their number was a little over six thousand dollars, um, to complete the cleanup. You had asked the question before if we had the money in our budget. So what we've done in the past with this one is we've done it out of our solid waste budget, which has a contingency in that budget, because we just don't know how the, the year's going to shake out. But now that we're over, oh, we're almost, I don't know, what are we, we're a little over seven months, um, we're looking fine with that. So we'll just follow that same line that we've done if y'all are okay with moving forward with it.
Are there any questions for Adam?
How many times will this litter pickup happen?
So this is just a one-time pickup. This is Seventeen Roads, one time. The only way that the, the company in the past, I didn't even ask them this time, but the way that they talked to us the last time, we had asked, would they do it like quarterly or would they do it two times a year? The only way that the price goes down is if we do it monthly. If we want to do it every month, the price per mile will go down, but if it's quarterly or any, any configuration other than, than monthly, it won't go down.
And when will this take place?
So they, in the past, they were able to get on it within less than a month, um, once we tell them go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, if there's no questions and no discussion, we'll need a motion. Correct? Motion to approve or deny the litter pickup?
I'm using existing funds. I just, like a thumbs up, like, do you want to do this?
So then we just need a consensus, give a thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Thank you, Adam.
Yep.
I think you have to stay up there, because now we're up to the ADA push-button access.
I do. So, um, this has been talked about probably since we've been in this building and maybe even before we were in this building. We had thrown out a number for what we thought it potentially could cost. Remember that number was worst-case scenario. That was replacing door, having to move a wall, you know, doing a lot of things. We've had a vendor that actually they make the components here in Union County. They're made out in Monroe, but closer towards the airport. And then a vendor that we were recommended to use by the architect that did this building. I will tell you, it's not the one that did our original doors and windows, because I've had a few issues with some things. It's a different vendor that they use. We got back a number for less than ten thousand dollars. I'm not going to give you an exact number and my reason for that is it's construction and things change. That's for one-door actuator, so it would be, if you were walking up to the front of the building, the door on the right-hand side would be the one that would actuate. The push buttons would be Bluetooth communication, so we wouldn't have to put in wiring to those. And we would use a separate vendor to pull electricity to the location where we would need it. If you want to actuate both doors, it's about another three thou, five thousand dollars. I wouldn't recommend that from a staff standpoint, because let's say the power does ever go out in the building, the actuated doors get really heavy because they're actually geared too open with the actuator. So that would allow that other door to still meet all your ADA codes and open up at a, at a very easy rate.
I just have one question. Door is wide enough for?
The door does meet code already for-
Wheelchair access? Okay. Any other questions?
So for the one door, it meets the requirement?
Yes, yeah. If, if we only had a single door there, like if we didn't even have a double door, we would meet it, but we meet it basically doubled because we have two doors.
Any other questions? If there's no questions, this will need a motion for, correct?
I, so we will pull money out of an existing budget to do this, so we have a, like a building kind of upgrade. But just being that it's an add-on to the building, I would prefer a motion coming from council to tell us to do it. But you don't need to move funds or anything like that.
Council, do, do you guys want to discuss this further or are you ready to act on it? Or?
Okay.
Ms. Shirley?
It would just take another thirty days and before we could get any information out of them or send them whatever they needed. It would delay doing something right away.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're looking at it from the time I tell them to go. It should be done within eight weeks. So that includes pulling power and putting in the enclosure.
So can I ask one other question?
Yes, sir.
You did, you did mention something about money and Jim's right here. Jim, can we afford this? Jim says we can afford it.
Jim says we can afford it.
Installation will only take like one day, is that?
So we're, the, the number's a tiny bit higher, because I want them to either do it at night or on the weekend, because it will be very loud when they're doing this and I don't want it done during operating hours.
Okay, but it, it will be-
It'll, it'll take, they said anywhere from four to six hours to put it in.
And you're going to do that at night?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, okay.
Non-operating hours for the building.
Well, if you guys can make the motion.
And if we needed to schedule a, a time that we were going to do it on the weekend when people weren't in the building, so.
So we need a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the ADA push-button access door.
Mr. Head's made the motion to approve. All in favor? Pass. That would be unanimous.
One. One door.
One door. One door. Thank you, council.
Thank y'all.
That brings us to new business, meeting safety. That's, uh, Mr. Barber and Captain James. I'm going to yield the floor to you.
Well, actually, this is, uh, brought up by myself and-
Ms. Howell?
Councilmember Howell. We, um, had noticed that there's been planning board meetings with no security. And, um, so what we brought up was, is I appreciate some of the planning board being here. I noticed we've got Michelle Porter Rees, Samantha Towns and Mr. Dennis Gay from here. I don't know if anyone else is here, but thanks for being here and thank you, Captain James. But, uh, I guess it's just a discussion, I don't know if we need action, but, I mean, they're volunteers, there's staff here and these meetings can get pretty intense and we may need to separate someone or whatever, or maybe give the chairman the ability to let y'all throw someone out if they need to. But I was just wondering if it'd be capable or okay if y'all could have someone here on those days. What's, is that doable?
Ms. Karen can tell you specifically about our interaction into public meetings. It has to be at the request of whoever's over the meeting, for one, as far as throwing somebody out, like you put it.
Right.
They have to be directed to leave by whoever's the chair over the meeting itself and then that gives us authority to act past that.
But you, you could train Mr. Gay on that?
That would be, that would have to come from myself.
Right, yeah. I mean, they, so generally, if you know there's going to be a contentious meeting, then it would be perfectly normal and appropriate for, um, planning staff to ask the sheriff to have a person present in the event something did come up. And then we could absolutely work with the chair of the committee to explain and demonstrate or, you know, explain to him how he can go ahead of keeping order in the meeting.
So we can have someone there if you, if we think it's necessary?
That, that, that would be my recommendation.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if, that's not an issue. I mean, if they, Ms. Dees or Ms. Karen Cosman says, we know this meeting's going to be a problem, not necessarily be a problem, but it might get out of hand, I'll have somebody there. That's the stat trying to staff every meeting with my current staff level is going to be, would be troublesome.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we need it at every meeting, but the ones that, there are some contentious ones. If, if, who, who would need to make that call to you to have someone here, do you think?
Ms. Dees would be fine. I mean, she contacted, she knows and she's going to know the ins and outs of it and she lets me know.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And I'll just, I'll just add that it would be common practice for somebody to call, you know, I think Brandy would probably have his, um, cellphone. We can always call if something comes up unexpectedly too and get something, I know you'd get something here in a minute, so.
Okay. So that's doable. The next thing was, is my understanding, Town Hall, uh, no weapons are allowed, correct?
Well, that's another issue we need to address as well. We need to post the building. The front doors need to be posted with the stickers and I actually meant to print, print some samples out for you to look at, but I'm sure you've seen them in other government buildings, but, you know, we need to make sure there's two general statute numbers that specifically relate to the concealed carry as well as the concealed carry in government buildings. And those stickers have to be labeled as such, notifying general public that they can't walk in here with a concealed weapon concealed or otherwise. So no firearm whatsoever inside the building. Employees would be on a separate policy, depending on what the council and the manager suggested, and then obviously law enforcement. Uniform law enforcement would be fine. But we need to get those, those public accesses, those need to be marked as, as soon as we can get them marked.
Do we have a policy for employees?
I think we passed an ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd, and about this particular facility, I believe we did pass an ordinance about rules about this facility and I believe there was a no weapons, um, component to that ordinance. We will go back and look and get confirmation of what that is and then I'll, we can have staff work with Captain James to get the proper signage and everything we need to comply with the ordinance that I believe we've already passed, or you have already passed as council.
Okay. So we can do the signs then to the stickers?
Oh, yes, sir. I mean, on any, any Indian Trail property to include parks, uh, if you decided you wanted to, to placard parks, you could do that as well under that same general statute.
Y'all just want to do the building? You want to worry about parks or?
I think we should do it in areas that the town is responsible for, so parks and, um, the, the town buildings, because there's no hunting out of all parks, right? So there's no need for anybody to carry a gun. It's really just in the interest of safety. I'm, I'm not trying to limit people's ability to carry concealed, but, um, I, I would say would probably not be consistent to say not the building, but the park. If I'm at the park, I'm really just there to watch a soccer game or basketball or whatever's going on there. So I would probably recommend we put it at the two parks that we have and three, sorry, my apologies, three.
And Ms. Walter can also-
Let me interject here. There are some state statutes that limit, um, the municipality's ability to restrict, concealed carry on park premises, recreational facilities. So let me, um, do a little bit of research and get y'all exactly how we are able, um, to handle that and I'll come back and, um, I'll bring that back to the next meeting or whenever. I can let you know what our, what our parameters are for controlling that.
I stand corrected.
And that's what I was going to say. Miss, there's several options in that general statute that allows you to store a firearm in a locked-in-a-vehicle on government property. And then there's absolutely no access, but like Ms. Karen said, there's, there is some limitations as to when on public parks, as to when they can carry concealed and where they can be concealed.
And it might be a moot point, but, um, as far as the concealed carry in parks go, you have to be vetted through the sheriff's department already. And I would, personally, I would feel more secure being in the park, thinking that maybe there is someone there who's already been through that process with the concealed carry who is following the law versus someone who's concealed carrying, not following the law and having that little bit of protection if these gentlemen aren't available. Just, again, it may be a moot point, but I wanted to provide a little bit of feedback regarding that.
I'll be, I'll be happy to bring back the parameters and you all can decide what, how y'all want to handle it.
Okay. So we'll finish this up at the next meeting with the signs and-
One other, one other thing on this is, uh, when we have some of these contentious meetings, um, do you think, I don't know if you have it, but, you know, like, not putting in metal detectors, but you know, like the wand or if y'all, would y'all felt, would you like want to search someone or, or maybe even do the wand?
Some of the documentation I put in front would just kind of give you an idea. And the, the portable detector, which is from CellSense, that's what we're using, uh, for the most part now. It's a three-sixty passive device that can be, you set a sensitivity on it as low as a coin in a pocket to as big as a firearm. And that's a, can be either by visual or audio, by beeping alarm going off on it. That's a rechargeable unit that can be moved from place to place. So that's an option if you wanted to put it at the front door or you put it out here outside of the council chambers. And I've also got a, one of these units on loan. If the council directs me, I'll be glad to bring it and set it up to let you see it, because it's very, very portable, very easy to move around. If, you know, to say for instance that, you know, it needed to be used for a park event with a pass-through, the, you can move it to do that and you don't have to have power. You know, you can recharge the battery and move it from place to place. A unit such as that, and what I've got there in front of you, and don't, don't quote me on this quote, but you're looking in the ten thousand, the tw- the twelve thousand dollar range for that portable unit. But the thing that our, the biggest plus that we get, we get out of with our office is you've got the audio and the visual and the audio, where you can tuck, cut the volume down and you've got the audio light displaying at the top when somebody passes through that three-sixty, either lights green or it lights red. So it's an indicator to let you know whether something, you know, individuals may have something that needs to be searched. The passive wand, this also in your packet that I gave you is by Garrett, manufactured by Garrett, that's usually going to be in the two-hundred-dollar range, somewhere around there. The thing is, is with that wand, you're kind of running into the same situation that[1737.24] that you've got to have somebody to operate it, to staff it. And again, you run into a situation where I think if one of my guys or girls are here, and it's that contentious, to where you think it's, everybody coming in the buildings may need to be searched. I think you may be needing to look for a different outlet, so to speak, compared to doing this. And me and Mr. Allen had this conversation the other day, and not to, not to downplay it by any means, but if you set these devices in motion, you've got to train staff, Indian Trail staff on it. And then you've got to have Indian Trail staff that can be willing, or be trained to confront individuals that may need to be searched. Does that make sense to the council?
Sure.
So, the, we've got those Garrett hand scanners that I feel sure I wouldn't have an issue in borrowing one if we needed it. But I think, again, if we know that that meeting's coming, where it's going to be that contentious, I'm going to have somebody there. You're going to have a uniform, at least one, there to recognize or try to deal with any problems with people coming in.
Maybe what we could do is, what you're talking about is additional cost is, when you come into a budget, maybe that's something we could add in, or decide to add in or not, if you want it, maybe to do it that way. We could just say in a budget thing, say, well, is this something we want to add, budget-wise, or something we don't, if that would be okay with you?
Oh, yeah, totally.
If that's okay with everybody, we, you know, we could look at it in a budget situation. If it's something we want to do or not. Because eventually, as we grow, we may need, you know, a lot of government buildings have them. So, it might be something we want to look at in the future.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, okay.
The passive portable device?
Mm-hmm.
You said that's, and not to quote you on the numbers, but 10 to 12K just for the hardware?
That's the device out the door.
And that particular unit, like, does it handle a double door, something like that?
360 degrees. If you set it up outside that door, it would get people passing on both sides of it. Same with the front door, you can set the sensitivity, how far out it goes. And then the sensitivity within that 360-degree beam. It's actually designed not to pick up moving doors, it's picking up people, metal moving on people.
So, like at Cricket Creek Park, where they have the entrance there, it could be utilized?
I'm not really familiar with how big that, the walk paths are there, if it would cover the entire entrance. But if you funneled it down to where people were coming, you know, using that concrete sidewalk?
We're 10-foot as you go in through the gated area. So, as you go up to the field, we're 10-foot. But there's two, three entrances to the fields, there's two entrances to the playground. So, there's, you know, you would have to tell people, you can only go in one way.
So, could we get some kind of cost to, for training staff, or the appropriate personnel? I like your idea about bringing it to budget, because if we knew it's $12,000 for that, and $15,000 for training, and?
CellSense will actually send their personnel in to train. And that's what we, this is not the only system we use in the sheriff's office, within the sheriff's office. But it's not as cumbersome as something like, if you've been in the judicial center, you've seen how big that is. This is nothing like that, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Captain James, and I did have a conversation about this. One concern I have, and we discussed it, was, you know, if you put in something, I'm really not sure I'd be comfortable, or any of our staff would be comfortable acting in a law enforcement, security capacity. So, I mean, you could train staff, but, but, you know, we're not really set up. I mean, if, so my feeling is, if you have that, then I think you either need law enforcement officers or trained private security guards to do that. I just don't think it's, would be appropriate to have our, our staff, who have completely different jobs, to act in that capacity, just?
That's why I thought, a good and a budget item to see what we're really looking at, you know? So, whether we need law enforcement, security, or what we would need?
You always have that option of either, you know, hiring additional off-duty sheriff's deputies if you think there's going to be something that would be beyond the capacity of the current staff that you're allocated, or private security, either of those are options. But probably off-duty law enforcement would be a better?
I give you credit, you first pointed Indian Trail, and it was a good one. Welcome aboard. Ms. How, did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
No, but I just think we need something. We're at your mercy, we're on the second floor, there's not many ways out of here, unless you want to jump over the balcony, which you probably would do, I don't know. But I think we should put it in, in the budget and see what we're, what we're dealing with. I agree with that.
Then I would say, Ray, will you just add that to the budget meeting, the workshop this coming Saturday, as a?
Sure, absolutely, sir, wonderful.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one, what was the downside of the hand wand?
I'm sorry, having somebody to operate it. And, I mean, there's no downside to it. I mean, this is very, a very viable option. But it's just, if we're staffing an officer here for the meeting, and it comes to that point, nine times out of 10, the officer's not going to use it. He's going to escort the person, once he's directed, he's going to escort the person out.
What's the price point on that?
About, right at $200, some plus or minus a little bit, but you're looking at a $200 range.
So, I have a question.
It seems that either way you go, you're going to need somebody to operate it, whether it's the wand, or whether it's the actual unit. And it's not fair to put staff in that capacity, because they didn't sign on to be security personnel. So, either way, if we're going to look at it in the budget, whether it's the actual $12,000 unit or the $200 unit, we do have to factor in the cost of an actual either off-duty officer or a security person, meaning somebody training that. So, there's, so it's two separate costs we have to look at, the cost of the actual unit, and the cost of the time or salary for the person who's going to be doing, providing, you know, or using that item, right? Yeah, so.
Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Everything, looking into it. Thank y'all, planning board, for being here too, thank you.
Anyone else? Nope, okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the street acceptancy policy, Todd?
Mayor, Council. Again, as you can see on the agenda, it's just info. We're not asking you to make a decision tonight, but we've had this policy since 2014. And I think, you know, the staff recommends we update it. And there's some irregularities in the policy that we feel needs to be fixed. What I'd like to do is just give you kind of a brief history of, I mean, how the policy works right now, and what is good. Language-wise, we don't really need to change it. It's really the formula that's in place that needs to be changed. So, starting out, again, the policy covers three street types, residential, commercial, and newly constructed. Now, mainly, that's all we do, we basically accept newly constructed streets. We rarely get involved with existing condition streets. As you see the procedures for residential, you know, the applicant comes in for the submittal. Now, this HOA 50% petition is based on if it's an existing condition, not a newly constructed street. So, this is what they have to go through if they want us to start looking into it. And they also have to provide a payment core report, the town does an inspection, and then the formula takes place. And we'll talk about the formula in a minute. Commercial street, same deal, applicant comes in, has to be 50% of the linear foot of the owners out there. Town does an inspection, formula. Newly constructed, basically, we worked, developed the whole time on this one. We basically are out there overseeing the work. So, the payment core report is not, obviously, we don't ask for that if we're out there every day looking at it, making sure the road's built to town standards. So, really, all they had to do is submit a letter to the town manager, they had to have a recorded plat. And basically, we do a final inspection, they pave it, and we accept the streets. We come to y'all, we accept the streets. So, that's, that's kind of the easy process. The problem with the policy right now is the existing formula. And again, this was done, I'd say, three town managers ago. And we haven't really came to you to change it, because we don't run into, we don't really run into a problem of somebody coming and saying, okay, well, I have a private street, or I have a state road, a street, and, you know, we don't, we want y'all to come and take it over. So, we feel like we need to go through that process. And from what research we've done, as far as staff, and Karen, I'm not sure if this is correct, but we, this has only been done like three times in the whole state, ever. So, it rarely happens that, you know, you get property owners that want to spend money or help compensate the town to take these streets over, upgrade them, and eventually take them over. So, this is kind of the process where the formula works for this current policy, which is basically, you take the age of the roadway, based on, you know, property information, when the, you know, the house was built, take a 30-year life cycle, and then take a quarter cost, you know, reduce to compensate the power bill. And then where we come at problems is, the other kind of credit is the pavement condition index. And unfortunately, if you've got a private street, we don't do pavement conditioning surveys on private streets. So, we don't even have that information. And I don't think the engineering department back then was really giving any, I guess, say-so in this policy back then. So, again, I don't think it was very well thought out. So, what we want to do is, as a staff, is simplify the policy. And I'm just going to go over that with you. Now, again, the policy states, as far as council's concerned, you don't have to go through this process. I mean, if these homeowners want us to go through the process of looking at this street and seeing about building it to our standards, and the town forking money to do that, you could say, no, we don't want to do that. You could just basically deny it right then. That's why, I mean, there is a caveat in the policy that states that. But right now, the policy right now, but this statement basically says, states that we have to build that to its town standard, meaning that curb and gut or storm drain, everything, it has to be built, which gets expensive. And unfortunately, people that are stuck with a road out there that needs to be taken over, and they want to contribute, it's just too much money. So, this is where your decision-making comes into play. You've got really two options, all right? We can either improve the road to an existing condition, and I'll give you an example. Say it's a gravel road, just ditch section gravel road. You know, we just go in there, build it to the width it needs to be built, grade some ditches, and just pave it, and make it at least a standard road that we can actually submit the power bill for future, you know, funds. Then that's, that's an option we can look at. The other option is to stay with the policy and basically saying, well, we have to upgrade to town standards, period. And I think based on the fact it's an existing condition, I don't think that, you know, goes against the UDO, because the UDO is basically, it's about newly constructed streets that need to be built to town standards. So, I don't think that's, well, me and Karen can look in more, a little bit more on that, but I don't think that if a developer can come in and say, well, now you're allowing, you're taking over ditch section paved street, you know, we should be able to build that. I don't think they can come back and do that. Karen's shaking her head, so I'm going to say, I say yes. So, so what we want to do is, all right, so we either keep the policy where it is, and have to build town standards, or we can try to help these homeowners and build it to where, what we think we can live with, and then maintain it, all right? All right, the way the state statute works now is, basically, we, right now, we have to basically give a cross-the-board 50% credit to the process. So, I'll get to that in a minute. But if you have, say, a $100,000 improvement, then they get a 50% across the board. So, they don't owe us but 50%, which is $50,000. We've came up with a table, I'll show you in a second, the next slide, that gives you an additional credit. Again, trying to simplify the policy and trying not go through a formula process. And then you have another statute that basically states, if they, if it goes through the assessment process, then you've got two options, that they can pay cash and pay it all at one time, or they can go through a 10-year, a minimum 10-year installment, or a max 10-year installment. All right, now, we came up with this, and this is, this is not set in stone by no means, but this is just going through, going through the numbers of what it would take to upgrade a 1,500-foot road, 18-foot wide minimum standard. These are the credits we came up with, all right? You've got three different roads out there that we deal with, or we see out there. You've got gravel roads that are still private, you have a ditch section road that's paved, and then you have basically our kind of standard roadway, which is paved and curbed. And as the table says, you've got less than $1,000, you get these credits. Again, they're lower credits, because it's not going to take that much money to, you know, fix a 1,000-foot road. And of course, the credits get greater just to assist these homeowners in the process. So, if you break it down table-wise, and I'll send this to you in an email, you know, tomorrow. But just, again, if you deal with a 15-foot road, 18 feet wide, and you say it's a $100,000 improvement, all right, there's your credits you get based on the road, all right? Now, this is based on existing conditions now. This is to build it back to an existing condition, not to build it to a town standard. All right, you go through the process of 10-year installment plan, then you, and you've got a 1,500-foot road, usually has about 40 lots on it, so that's 40 homeowners paying into that. Then it breaks down monthly to about $7, $8, $9 a month for 10 years. Other example, you build it to a town standard, and so we have to go in there and build it. And like, and so, obviously, a higher cost, gravel road, we're just guessing, half a million. Ditch section of pavement, $350,000, and $100,000 just, just for patching overlay in the road, because it's basically built to the standard. Again, now you see where the costs come into play. Now, you're up to $36 a month, or $29 a month. And then, of course, if they've already got a road that's decently built, you know, they're not paying that much for us to turn it over. All right, and then the last chart is just a comparison of what we talked about, is, you know, do we, this is the other option, do you just give a 50% credit across the board, don't give the additional credit? So, that's, that's your number, that's your number side of an existing condition. And the two columns is an upgrade to an existing condition. You've got a 50%, no additional credit, which is $13 a month for gravel, and a 50% with no credit at all, which is $7. I mean, I'm sorry, with additional credit, which is $7. So, again, you look at the table long enough, you'll understand what we're trying to say here. But upgrading is a big difference. You went from additional credit, 50%, $7, $36. Well, if you do it to a no credit to a town standard, you went from $13 all the way up to $52. So, it's a, it's a big jump to keep it to town standards. And so, we're, again, it's up to the council to decide how do you want to move forward, and what kind of benefit you want to give to the citizens. But there's kind of two options out there on the table. And again, this is what I talked about earlier, is basically, you have a clause in the policy that says you have the reserve right to refuse any acceptance, so, of any street, if it, if it deems the repair is too much for the town to bear. That's it.
First question, is there something you would recommend to council, your staff?
Yeah, I mean, the only problem you have to, you have to be concerned with as a council is the fact that if we go out and build these roads, like we ended up building a road, we can't use power bill because it's private still. So, we would have to use general fund or some other source to be able to do these improvements. Again, we would come to you, say, okay, they follow the policy, whatever the new policy is, they followed it, this is what the breaking is, they want to move forward. But then y'all can say, well, look, you know, we're having to fork out, you know, over a million dollars to do this, do this road. Maybe it's over 2,000 feet long, I mean, we don't know. So, you know, you've got to weigh in on that. And again, you've got the, you've got the caveat of saying, no whatsoever, if it gets to be too big of a burden for the town. But if it's something small, and you feel like they deserve the addition, you know, you go over to the extra credit policy, to me, it's a, you know, again, the town's putting, you're putting a burden on the town to finance the road. But again, you're trying to help people that are in dire straits, that are stuck with a road that they can't afford to maintain. So, you have to look at it both ways.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do we have a lot of these roads in town?
No.
We don't. Your estimation, what's the total miles of road within that condition? And you know why I'm asking that, right?
Yeah. Right now, let's just for, for sake, state roads right now, subdivision roads, just a subdivision state road right now, is like 39 miles, you know? Which, and then you've got private gravel roads.
What was that?
39 miles of just state roads in subdivisions, in subdivisions. You've got a total of 106 in the town limits.
39 miles, state roads in neighborhoods, is that what you said?
Yeah, and, yeah, in neighborhoods, right now, that's in the town limits, that we don't own, there's 39 miles of streets. Now, I can tell you how much that'll cost you, you want to know?
Yeah, I'm waiting for that, man.
If you go out there and pave that mill, and pave it two inches, two-inch mill, two-inch pave, with about 20% of patching, we figure, it's about what we use here lately, 20% for each road. You're talking about $10 million.
10?
$10 million.
All right.
Private-wise, really, you don't have a lot of mileage. Private-wise, really, you, you don't have a lot of mileage. I mean, there's not a miles out there, but really, a bulk of it is like one private neighborhood. And I don't even know if the owner of that neighborhood would want to even consider us to even go in there. So, we've never had a conversation with them, and so, but it's just these outliers, you don't, yeah, I mean, you have probably two to three miles, maybe.
Would this be like first, second, or third?
No, third we own?
No, no, this is, I'm talking like gravel roads now. No, this is above first half, second half, and third. You've got Woodland, Woodland, Woodbine? I think it's Woodline, Rose Drive. It starts with a K. I think another road starts, I don't know.
So...
Rock Crows, Extreme Ice Base.
So, so what is the cost of doing that particular road you just mentioned?
If you did one of those roads, they're about over 2,000 feet. So, if you did it to town standard, you're going to pay over a million bucks, easy.
That's curb and gutter?
Yeah, yeah. If you just go out there and widen the road to a standard and pave it, you're not looking but a few hundred thousand. That's, that's where you've got to figure out policy-wise, where you want to go with. Do you want to keep it as, everything has to be town standard, or can we live with accepting some streets that are not per town standards?
Right. And just, just to clarify, so, so we've got those, the troubling roads where nobody's claims them. And so, what, what Todd's saying is what we could do, the town could just choose to get them to Powell bill standard, which is a width 18-foot, is that right?
Yes.
And then, once, and then, so the town would have to pay out of general fund dollars to get it to Powell bill standard, and then it would be added to our Powell bill list after that point.
I'm sorry, it's actually 16 feet, but we wouldn't build it 16. We would do 18.
So, they'd do 18. So, so that, that's where we're going, that, that's why this came up, because people have been asking about some of these private roads. And it's a, it, they're, they're all over the state. So, this is not unique to Indian Trail. But these are roads that a developer put in, and then all of a sudden, the developer disappears, and the HOA disappears, and the houses sell over time, and you've got people living on a road that they never, they assumed the state or the town took care of, and they don't. And so, this is the, I know you all have probably gotten phone calls about this from somebody at one point in time, but this is sort of the, the town's effort to let you all understand the scope of stepping in to help the citizens on this topic. And they, they split the cost through a special assessment, through a special tax assessment. And that's this 50% process that Todd was talking about in the 10-year payout. So, that's what, that's the concept that is before you today.
So, Mr. Huntsinger, you don't need any action from us, but would it be possible for me to come in and ask more questions on this? And, and here's why I'd like to do that. We have the budget coming up soon. And I know that we have some of these roads within the town. And being honest, a few people pay taxes, and they want results, and they look at us because we're in town. So, maybe one of the things we can look at, instead of saying that we're going to pony up $10 million and fix the roads and deplete the general fund, maybe one of the things that we can look at is basically, I have some questions, but is it possible for you to get, give us sort of, here's the certain roads that we have, here's the cost of some of them, either curb and gutter, or just widen to, what's it, 16?
18 feet.
18 feet, and pave just to get the, the Powell bill. And then, maybe council can sort of look at which ones they want to include in the budget. And maybe, every year, we, we tackle one, and if, or two, if possible, and see how we do that versus, you know, taking a big bite all at one time, trying to bring relief at some point. Because I, I do understand some of the residents' concerns in that they don't have any recourse, right? If they go to the state, the state's like, "I don't own your road. Come to the town. You know, we don't own your road." And keep getting passed back and forth. So, it would be good to see how we can sort of bring some, so, try and figure out something. That's just my suggestion. I mean, there's five other people here who can...
Wester Council, like to make an appointment?
Let's look at a process to do this, maybe over time.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that.
Do you want a, do you want a five-year or 10-year?
Ten.
Can we get both?
Yeah. How hard is it to get both? It shouldn't be...
No, you just got to give me time, that's all.
Okay.
Mr. Allen? So, another option, because it's, it's an assessment process, is you can do it first come, first served, because the, the property owners, as he mentioned, you have to have 50% of the property owners' petitions. So, it's possible that on some of these streets, you're not going to get half of the property owners to, to sign that. And the other thing just to keep in mind is, if 50% sign, and you move ahead, you may have 49% who don't want it. But they're going to get assessed just like everyone else. So, they're going to have to pay that, that yearly annual cost to the town. And there are some administrative costs and time and effort that are involved in an assessment process. You've got to hold public hearings, and, you know, you've got the, the annual billings and all that, just to keep in mind. But, but just one thought is, you know, it may be that, you know, you, if you adopt a policy, and you open it up to the, to the neighborhoods that are eligible, you may not have a ton of them all in at one time. They may trickle in over some manageable period of time because of the, the process they'll have to go through. Just a thought.
Yeah. Again, the policy is, it's set up to do that process. It's the, the problem is the formula just doesn't make sense. And so, we want to clean that up.
To me, it's to improve it to, to city roads, that's just never going to happen.
No.
If you're waiting for that to happen, I mean, it just, no one is going to be able to afford to do the curb and gutter and the, and the width that you're looking at.
Well, and I, and I'll throw another wrinkle into the, the mix, is certain roads, especially gravel roads, they're all septic. And if they have to ever get the sore, the sore's usually in the middle of the road. So, why are you going to go out there and do all that work for a town standard road that may end up getting tore up 10 years down the road because the septic fields go bad? So, it's just not a good...
Who's responsible for the road when the septic tank goes bad? Is that county?
Yes, but the problem is, you've got, you're, you're getting the county to fix a road that, you know, may not be the, the best ideal way to do it, so...
Well, is council okay with making appointment with Mr. Huntsinger, and addressing their questions, and understanding the formulas a little more?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, expect some phone calls.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
All right.
Thank you, Todd. That brings us to the comp plan.
Yes, sir. 10C. So, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Earlier tonight, we had the, the attorney sort of give us some training on, you know, sort of rules of the roads when it comes to the comp plan. I've had a discussion with Mr. Allen, I've had a discussion with Karen, and I have, I've had a discussion with Ms. Dees, and also council as well. And what I'd like to do is, our comprehensive plan, I think, Mr. Morse, correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned, it's from 2005, right?
Right.
So, we're in 2020, we're talking about 15 years old. For us to really get a good UDO, we need to really build, build a good foundation. These are not my words, this was what was told to me. And the comprehensive plan will be what the foundation that the UDO calls for. That also gives us the ability to sort of plan ahead for Indian Trail as a town in terms of where we want to see certain things. So, what I'm going to do right now, if there's no questions, I want to make a motion, but I wait for, I pause for a question if anybody has it. Okay, there's no question. I want to make a motion to instruct staff to begin the process to update the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Mr. McAtar's made the motion. All in favor. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. That's it.
Thank you. That brings us to Mr. Allen. Do you have anything to add to the meeting? I do not, your honor. Thank you. That brings us to council comments. Karen, you're up.
Well, I do. I have one job, I have one job, and every time I forget.
Well, we'll just deduct it for your salary.
All right. Mr. Morse.
Everyone have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre.
Everybody have a good night. It looks like NC State and UNC's playing, so you're trying to get out of here. I don't blame you. But listen, good luck to you and Todd, by the way, both you guys. Mr. Allen, I want to say welcome to you. You know, if you need anything from the council, please let every, every one of us know. Staff, as always, we sit up here and we say, "Great job," and we mean it. We really do mean it. It's a pleasure to work with you guys. Ms. Quinn, thank you very much for keeping me in, in line, in, in my lane. Appreciate that. Captain James, appreciate you as well. Planning Board, thank you very much for coming out. You guys do a lot of the heavy lifting for us before it comes to us, so you make us look good. But thank you for your service. I know you're volunteers, but it's good that you're involved in the community. Counsel, I think this was a very good meeting tonight. It was a pleasure, always a pleasure to work with you guys. Everybody drive home safe, and go UNC. I'm sorry, Todd.
Ms. Howe.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. I have a special guest here tonight, and that's my oldest daughter. And her name's Kathy Salter, and she's helping me through a little difficult time right now. And I appreciate her being here. Thank you, hon. I love you.
Mr. Barber.
I'd like to welcome aboard Mr. Allen. We're calling him Front Page Allen now. First day here, he's on the front page, you know. So, big picture up there. Indian Trail Weekly got him good. So, the, but welcome aboard. He's all right for a Carolina man. I'll give him that. So, but thanks to the staff and everyone in the town for being so welcoming to him. I'd like to thank Sheriff's Department. Nab that bank robber, man, that was good. So, doing a great job. Planning Board coming out. I'd like to give a special thank you of prayers, is our mayor found out he's cancer-free today. And I think, we've all had family members and different friends battle cancer, and, man, that's just fantastic. Yeah. So, anyway, but I wish everyone a well evening, had a great council meeting, and getting some training. And I appreciate you setting that up, Ms. Walter. And I thanks for everyone coming, and everyone listening out there. Thank you.
Mayor Alvarez.
I just want to thank the town, and especially, and the staff for all your prayers. It's been a rough few months, big scare. And today was the roughest day I've probably had in my life, considering what I've been through. And I'd like to thank God for good results. Everybody, thank you for coming, and God bless you.
It's between me and the back door, huh? I, I want to thank all the volunteers for all the committees. We thank you for what you do. I want to thank staff for all their professionalism shown over the last few weeks. Welcome, Mr. Allen. We, we'll learn more from you, I think, than you'll learn from us. And we appreciate your, your, your being here. Captain James and your staff, thank you, as always. Please drive home safely. Have a good evening.
Okay. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but there's no closed session tonight, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, so moved.
Oh, in favor.
All right.
Did you raise your hand?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Meeting, meeting adjourned.
I just, the looks on your...